Welcome. I'm going to call this meeting to order. And please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call. All members, all board members are present. Next, I'm going to call for the open forum. In accordance with Policy 203, the board sets aside up to 15 minutes to receive citizen input through an open forum. Input from students, staff, parents, and community members in major decisions can be valuable form of assistance to the board. Open forum is an opportunity to address the board. The open forum is a safe place for Prior Lake Savage area schools, community members to share experiences, concerns, and feedback, and in accordance with their First Amendment rights. The forum is an opportunity for us all to elevate the conversation, create healthy spaces for dialogue, to demonstrate respect for opposing views so that we can all collectively do better. The open forum rules are as follows. At least 10 minutes prior to each meeting, a sign-up sheet will be available at the meeting site for individuals to sign up for the board. Up to five speakers shall be provided, a maximum of three minutes, 15 minutes in total, to address the board unless an exception is granted by the board chair. Up to five, speakers will not be allowed to verbally attack, disparage, or potentially defame individual board members, employees, or students, nor may speakers use vulgar or profane language. Also, speakers may be precluded from disclosing personally identifiable private data regarding employees or students. Speakers unwilling to conform to the rules or time constraints may be told his or her privilege of speaking has ended. If you have any handouts or materials for the board, please submit those in advance to Martha Walls. Members of the public should not approach the dais. The board will not review handouts during public comment, period. Board members shall listen respectfully to issues brought before them by the community but will not engage individuals during their time. The board shall not deliberate or take action during the open forum regarding an issue presented. Each forum speaker should indicate whether they would like to follow up, would like a follow-up by administration on the speaker forum, or if a follow-up by administration is necessary, the chair will show request that the superintendent follow up on the matter. After open forum, and when the board chair proceeds with the meeting, audience members are no longer in order. However, the board members retain the right to call on district administration for information to assist the board in its deliberations. Thank you in advance to the speakers and to the audience for respectfully sharing, listening, and being engaged in the Prior Lake Savage area schools community. With that, I would like to call up the first speaker, and that is Emily Gillespie.
Good evening, Dr. Thomas, Chair Franz, members of the board. My name is Emily Gillespie. I live in Savage, and I have two kids at Prior Lake High School. Tomorrow morning, a committee will meet to decide whether the book Melissa, which is the target of a book challenge in our elementary schools, will remain on the shelves or be removed. Tonight, I want to share a story with just one example from my family about why school libraries need diverse books, including those that have content that some adults in the community might consider to be objectionable or inappropriate. I want to share this particular story because for a moment, a couple of years ago, I was one of those adults. My daughter, then a seventh grader, was grabbing her books from her backpack, and I saw the cover of a book that put a knot in my stomach. That knot was fear. I recognized the book because it had been turned into a movie that I had seen. I knew that the book was controversial in some circles and that it had content that might be really hard for my daughter because of some of her own personal experiences. I worried that she might react poorly or be triggered by it. The fear was real, and I considered telling my daughter that she couldn't read the book. That would have been a perfectly valid reaction and well within my rights as a parent. I even considered telling the media specialist that I didn't think the book was appropriate for middle schoolers. But instead, I decided to talk to my daughter about it. I told her that I was worried about how she might react to the book and why. I told her that I would be reading the book along with her and that we would check in with each other as we were reading so that we could ask each other questions and talk through the challenging parts. What could have been an attempt to control my daughter was instead a wonderful way to connect with her. That is my right and my responsibility as a parent, to guide my own children as they grow and engage with the world through books, not to tell other families what books their children may or may not access. Book challengers do not have the right to impose their views on others or demand that the school's media resources reflect their personal preferences or their particular family values. To our media specialists and teachers, I am so grateful to you. I trust and support you as trained professionals who do an excellent job creating engaging collections for all learners. Books are the safest way for students to engage with the world in which they live, and they provide a crucial opportunity for parents to engage with their children about what they are reading. When the committee meets tomorrow to discuss the book Melissa, I hope they consider that protecting our kids' freedom to read does not take away our rights as parents. It gives us the gift of being able to help them learn how to navigate the world of literature and to guide them through it. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Nick Ingles on contract negotiations.
Board and Dr. Thomas, my name is Nick Ingles. I'm a father of a current Redtail Ridge fourth grader and 16-year English teacher at Prior Lake High School. I love being a Laker, and I love the opportunity every day to work with my students in District 719. And if you ask my students, I start class the same way every single day. It's a beautiful day in Prior Lake. However, over the past few years, I've realized that not every teacher shares my sentiment. Year after year, I say goodbye to my colleagues who are fed up with Prior Lake. They are tired of being asked to do too much for too little. Unfortunately for my friends, there are many opportunities available to other local schools for these teachers who are prioritizing and respecting their staff. My friends are gone. We've lost great teachers. My son lost the opportunity to work with these amazing teachers. But who cares, right? They've left. There's plenty of teachers we still have. Well, that's not true. In our union's most recent survey, 52% of our teachers are thinking of doing the exact same thing. That's right. 52% of our current union membership are considering seeking employment elsewhere if this board cannot improve on their future offer. In case you don't realize how disgusting the offer is, the offer currently values our teachers at 25% of what most districts in the state are currently offering. That's right. Let me ask you. Are Prior Lake teachers really worth 75% less than our colleagues around the state of Minnesota? The thought of losing any of the highly trained professionals here in this district breaks my heart. I've worked and collaborated with so many outstanding educators that I fear the hole that they will leave behind. And let me remind you how highly trained these individuals are. Every one of them has a bachelor's degree, and most of them have a master's degree. These are hard-working professionals that have put in the work to provide for the children in District 719, your children. The best education possible they are providing in this evolving 21st century world. In fact, 69% of PLSEA educators, including myself, are paying off student loans in excess of $10,000 in pursuit of a higher education. And what is the thank you our district extends? A negotiation offer that does not even cover inflation of cost of living. Remember, PLSEA and our members are the ones that lobbied the state legislator for the funding that you now find in your budget. That money needs to go somewhere, and our district demonstrates its values with how it spends its money. So why not to the teachers working with our students daily? Where? Consider the chagrin I feel every time I receive an email inviting me to welcome the new members to our district service center staff. Or when I see a posting on our district website offering positions starting at $65,000 to $75,000 for a position that requires no degree. No wonder 79% of our teachers currently do not feel valued by this district. Once again, my name's Nick Ingles. I'm an English teacher. I'm the student council advisor at Prior Lake High School. I'm the head speech coach at Prior Lake High School. But most importantly, I'm a father of a Redtail Ridge elementary student. I'm all in for 719. And as someone who has clearly invested in this district, why can't the district show the same level of investment in me and my fellow teachers? Show me that you are all in for teachers and so that my son can have the best education possible. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Carrie Lauderdale, also speaking on negotiations.
Board members, Dr. Thomas, good evening. My name is Carrie Lauderdale, and I'm a sixth-grade teacher at Hidden Oaks Middle School. I've been teaching in the Prior Lake Savage area school district for 34 years, and subsequently, I am the most senior teacher in the district. I stand here tonight, not only, or speaking only for myself, but I want to recognize all the amazing teachers that I am lucky enough to call my coworkers. Almost 28 years ago to the day, I was sitting at a negotiations table with Superintendent Dr. Les Sonnenbend, Dr. Jerry Spees, head of HR, and a few school board members, heading into the final days of putting together a contract settlement. During that time, I was able to learn a great deal about how the negotiations process works. I was able to sit across from administration, listen, learn, how to work with one another. I felt nothing but respect from the other side of the table, even during those tough decisions, those tough discussions, and was proud to be a part of that team. I am here tonight in support of our current negotiators, strong support, as I can remember all those years ago what negotiations can entail. However, I don't feel as though the level of respect for teachers is the same now, and for that reason, I am here speaking tonight. So much has changed in the past 34 years of teaching. The last five years alone have brought about changes we'd never thought we'd see. I am proud to be a teacher. I consider us a resilient group of people who arrive at schools, schools, many times much earlier than we are contracted to do. We strap on our boots. We walk into our classroom, never knowing what the day will bring. We can plan all we want, but what walks through our classroom door, we cannot plan for. We cannot plan for the student quietly in tears because a family member is sick or they themselves are sick. We cannot plan for the student who seems disengaged and angry because something is going on at home and they are hurting. We are able to, in a minute's notice, know how to discipline without causing embarrassment and yet maintain a straight face when a student says something inappropriate but hilarious. It takes courage to know that if the call goes out to take shelter, that we are in charge of those in our presence. And at the end of the day, many times after our eight-hour day has passed, we head home knowing that there are papers to correct and plans to adjust for tomorrow because we did not have the time to do it today. Please do not misunderstand. We are not asking for a contract settlement for the sake of settling. We are asking for a contract settlement that will not only recognize us for all that we do, but will show us the respect you say you have for us. The current district proposal is far below the current state average. In a year with record funding, the district's current offer, a 1% cost of living adjustment to our teachers' salaries, the amount proposed by the district is three times less than inflation and four and a half times less than the average salary schedule improvements than other Minnesota districts. Currently, the average salary schedule increase in the state is 4.5% for the first year and 3.39% for the second year. In a recent survey, 79% of our members told us that they do not feel valued as employees of the Prior Lake Savage area schools. We are here tonight asking that the school board examine what the budgeted amount for our contract means for individual teachers. Ask yourself, does the contract for a teacher with 34 years or four years of experience show how much the board values the work that they do each and every day?
Ms. Lauderdale, you're beyond your three minutes. I apologize, but please wrap it up.
No worries, no worries. I am asking that you continue to negotiate and work towards a contract that values our teachers. Thank you.
Okay. Our next speaker is Sarah Streggy.
Hello, my name is Sarah Streggy. I have taught English at our high school for 29 years. I am the department chair. I have served as a coach, a play director, and an advisor. I have had upwards of 15,000 students go through my classroom. I've had a lot of your children and nieces and nephews as well. I have written hundreds of recommendation letters for colleges, scholarships, military assignments, job applications, and even one blind date. Dr. Thomas, you are my fifth superintendent. Dr. Bezek is my fourth principal. I have a long history with this district, and the landscape of teaching is nearly unrecognizable. I need you to hear me. The realities that contemporary teachers face every day are not sustainable. Constant increases in responsibility, safety threats, mental health crises, constant battles over phones and social media, dysregulated behavior, poor attendance, and the politicization of our classrooms, and the expectation that we continue this indefinitely. It is not reasonable. Failing to prioritize teachers and provide salaries commensurate with our work ultimately ends in what history is going to judge a very disastrous period in education. We must attract new teachers. Two weeks ago, I told a 12th grade student that he would make an incredible teacher. Before he could even catch himself, he literally laughed out loud. And then, he quickly apologized, and he said he was really more interested in making money, but he was pretty sure that teacher, that being a teacher would be great, too. And it was very awkward and uncomfortable. I come from a family of teachers. In fact, our youngest, teacher number 18 in my family, graduated from UMD in December. He applied for and was interviewed by two top-tier districts here in Minnesota, was offered both positions within 24 hours, and of course, he accepted the one that paid $4,800 more right across the lake from him. A no-brainer and a cautionary tale for districts everywhere. Your current offer of a 1% cost of living adjustment to our salary scale is frankly insulting. And certainly, not enough to attract new teachers. We need to retain quality teachers that we have now. Career teachers are professionals who can fill non-education jobs handily for better pay and for more respect. Look around, it's happening as we speak. Demand for educated workers is outstripping supply. One former Laker is leaving her teaching job after 17 years. She told me that teaching has become like a toxic relationship one stays in only for the sake of the children. Recent NEA polls report that a staggering 35% of teachers are likely to quit in the next two years. If there's one thing the pandemic taught us, it's the importance of teachers. If kids aren't in school, parents aren't at work. And if parents aren't at work, businesses aren't operating. Our economy, our society, depends upon teachers, and that's not hyperbole. When the pandemic shut our world down, people looked to teachers to somehow make it work. And you know what? We did. We didn't have training for online curriculum. We did not know how to engage students over virtual platforms like Google Meet, but we figured it out.
Ms. Streggy, you're beyond your three minutes. Please, let's wrap it up a little bit. Thank you.
Okay. I will finish it up. I'm just saying, it's your turn now. It's your turn to do the hard things. I know that you can figure it out. My friends and I, we all love what we do. We love what we do, but it has to make sense. And what you're proposing, it does not make sense. And you need to make the teachers at Prior Lake your number-one priority because having us grovel for the bare minimum every two years in the negotiation cycle, it's just not okay. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on our agenda, I'm going to take a motion to approve the agenda.
So made.
Second. Okay. Motion by Director Crosby and second by Director Burnick. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That passes 7-0. Next, we move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda are items considered to be routine in nature enacted by one motion. There is no separate discussion for these items unless a board member so requests, in which event, the item will be removed on the consent agenda and addressed under new business. I'd like a motion for the consent agenda.
So made.
Second?
Second.
Okay. The consent agenda includes, I'm sorry, I should have said this first. The consent agenda includes the financials, purchase orders above $25,000, the monthly financial report, enrollment report, approval of the school board minutes from December 11th and December 18th, personnel items, resignations, terminations, non-renewals, leaves of absences. And I believe that's it. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay. Call for... So, approve, call for approvals?
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Okay, that passes 7-0. Next, we have the resolutions for acceptance of gifts. Let me find that. Okay, thank you very much. We have one gift today from Target Corporation for $1,150 for 115 gift certificates for Bridges ALC students. All in, that's a roll call vote.
And we'll do a motion in a second to start.
Oh, a motion. And I'd like to take a motion for the gifts. So apologies, I'm still new at this. So made, second?
Second.
This is a roll call vote. We'll start with Director Olsted.
Aye.
Director, okay. Director Burnick?
Aye.
Director Velazquez?
Aye.
Aye.
An aye, so that passes 7-0. Okay. Next, we have Laker Pride, Special Recognition Laker Showcase. I'm going to hand that over to Superintendent Thomas.
Thank you so much, Chair Franz and Board of Directors. Tonight, we've got two points of pride, Laker pride. I want to share about Laura Hegman. She's a Jeffers Pond fourth and fifth-grade teacher. She was chosen for the 2023 Grovesvenor Teacher Fellowship from the National Geographic Society and Lindblad Expeditions. She is one of 50 educators selected from around the United States and Canada in recognition of their commitment to geographic education. The fellowship allowed Ms. Hegman to travel to the Galapagos Islands, where she had a very enriching experience. I just so happened to get a preview of this when I was visiting Jeffers Pond last week and popped into her classroom. And I can tell you, it's like watching a National Geographic special. I was instantly drawn in. Kids were glued to the conversation, to the videos, to the pictures. And what an honor it is for you to represent our district and also bring that level of international experience and learning to our students. So thank you for that. And I will turn it to you to share a few words and a few slides, probably.
Thank you very much. So, as you said, I'm Laura Hegman. Yeah. Thank you for dealing with my cheering crew. So, yes, I am a fifth-grade teacher at Jeffers Pond Elementary, and I'm also a Grovesvenor Teacher Fellow with National Geographic and Lindblad Expeditions. I was one of 50 educators that were chosen throughout all of the United States and Canada last year. And so, the 50 of us took off around the world to go and explore and bring back amazing opportunities for our classrooms. So I was lucky enough to be able to go to the Galapagos and hit a bunch of different islands while I was there. And I got to learn from these naturalists And I got to learn from these naturalists who have lived in the Galapagos their whole lives. And so they were my teachers and I got to be like a student and learn from them. And so I got to learn about the animals and the landscapes and just kind of take it all in and just view it like a kid would be able to. National Geographic has a huge plan to get students out and exploring and they want teachers to be explorers too. So they had us make sure that our kids know how to communicate, problem solve and collaborate. And it's something that I bring to my students all the time. We talk about how to be curious and think about the world in unique ways and be empathetic and be empowered to do something for our planet and just kind of set those knowledges of who we are as people and how we are interconnected with the natural systems in the world. So my big question was, how do I keep my students engaged while I'm in the Galapagos and they're still back at school? And so luckily, I had Mrs. Nelson who kind of teamed up with me and was able to help me out. And I would send off information to her so that she could present to the class as well. Beforehand, I had them doing some research about animals. And so they got to pick a Galapagos animal and take a lot of research in about it. And then they gave me challenges. Can you get a photo of this? Can you get a video of that? Could you get, could you actually swim with a shark? And so I took all those challenges and I did my best and I was actually able to do almost all of their challenges, which was great. I posted it on social media so that families could also be involved and they just loved it. So it worked. They were engaged, they were captivated, they became their own explorers. They were the ones asking questions that I would go out and find more facts for them. And they were just so excited to learn. That also brought forth like, hey, we're going to Wolfridge and you guys can be your own explorers. So I showed them my journals with all my drawings and how I took notes while I was out in the field when I wanted to explore. I said, you're going to be doing this too at Wolfridge, you're going to be taking notes, you're going to be putting it into your journal. And it just kind of connected everything and they felt like they were the explorers out in Wolfridge too. So now what? I am building on our human and natural systems within our classrooms and how can they interconnect? A huge thing in the Galapagos is invasive species and how even though they work so hard to keep them out, something as simple as a fly can decimate a bird population. And so I want us to look at not the Galapagos, but here at Prior Lake. What are some invasive species? What can we do about it? What are some next steps if we're having that explorer mindset? Let's get out and do something positive for our community. So thank you again for your time. I look forward to sharing more with you guys down the road.
Yay!
Yay!
And thank you Patrick for allowing her to be loaned out.
Thank you Laura. Congratulations. So awesome.
We have our own Darwin Explorer.
And thank you to her husband and her kiddos for allowing us to have so much time with her as well.
My favorite part, if I could say, you were, you, you had to, you didn't give up on your pursuit to do this. Can you, can you just share how many times you were told no?
Five times. So over the course of so many years with COVID and everything, but about five times of persistently going at it and applying and I finally received the yes, so.
Congratulations on your, that's incredible. Congratulations on your persistence.
Thank you.
Chair Franz and Board Directors, I've got one more. Tonight, we want to honor Mr. Dave Brown as he gets ready to be deployed as an active reservist for an assignment. And I have to just share that Mr. Brown is one who has clearly dedicated his life's calling to the young people in our community and does so without hesitation and gives so much of his time to the kids as if they were all his own. He also knows the power of collaboration and unifying in this community by bringing together business community, social civic organizations to support the overall growth and development of our kids. And we can't thank you enough for what you do on behalf of our students every single day. And so to add to that, he has also been giving of his time, well, maybe not so much giving, but he has dedicated time through his military career in service to also protect the freedoms and the luxuries that we enjoy here in our country. And so you're balancing, doing what's great for your local community, but you're also continually balancing what is great for the greater good of our, of our country. And we want to say thank you. We're honored that you are a part of our school community and know that you will be in our thoughts and prayers as you go overseas to take care of whatever you need to in, in your assignment and, and coming back here to also continue to serve in our community and bring what you've learned throughout the world back home here as well. So wanted to just turn it over to the board. If any of you would like to share anything as we wish him well and also Mr. Brown, give you an opportunity to share anything as well. And you might, I don't know if you have any, yeah, I'll just leave it like that.
Well, I'll, I'll start maybe, sorry, I'll jump in. I have only gotten to know you over this past year and watching you is a, just watching you, it's a privilege. I had no idea that you were, that you were military and I am not surprised one bit. Your servant heart and your servant leadership and how the students love you, it is palpable when I go to strive. So thank you so much. Wow. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that was pretty evident at graduation this past May. Seeing you interact with those kiddos, that was pretty amazing. And I think they are going to be very much missing you as I know that you will be missing them. You have done such good things at Bridges and it's like that building was made for you instead of people being made for that building. And I am, I'm so thankful for your service, your family's service and what you do here. And we hope that you make a safe return.
Thank you. So I'll just say a few words. First of all, thank you and thank you Dr. Thomas for this opportunity and, and board members. It's super humbling to hear the gratitude and the love you have for what has been, I think, just a, a shining example of, of what partnership with many people can do. And you see it at Bridges every day. And I want to say especially thank you from the military standpoint for being a service member. I cannot tell you how important it is for those of us in the uniform services that when we put on a uniform for National Guard men and women and reservists, that we are focused on the mission at hand and the task at hand. And to do that, that means we leave these spaces in good hands and with good support. And I can tell you, the support that, that you all have provided allows me and, and many others like me to go into theater, to go into our jobs and be able to focus on what our country is calling us to do. And that is so important because at times you see when, when that's not the case and how that affects people, how that affects families and how that affects the mission. So thank you, Dr. Thomas and Dr. Edwards and Director Herman for your support in this to allow me to leave and just leave in a good headspace knowing that, that I am supported in this role and that Bridges is in good hands. And I'd also like to recognize Dr. Bezek, Chad Thorpe and Kate Egerman who do a great, great job in supporting me when I'm out of the building. And especially my team at Bridges with the teachers there and our support staff, our, our student support. They, 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 the team is really what makes it work. Thank you for that individual recognition, but I'm, I'm one of several that just creates opportunity and wonderful transformational work in students' lives, in families' lives, in our community lives and in our education, educational environment. So thank you for the support. I'll, I'll be off and thinking of you fondly and eagerly anticipating getting back here and doing the important work that is yet to be done. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
What number deployment is this for you?
This is my second deployment overseas for this long period.
Thank you.
Thank you. And for someone who's been, understood what the ALC was and know the vision that you brought to even building that building and Bridges and have experienced that team and the students, you have made the lives of so many people so much better. So thank you very much.
Thanks, thanks. And I just want to recognize too that, you know, I couldn't do it without a wonderful family support system. So my wife Maria, my daughters, four, four girls, that's probably why I don't have any hair, but they, they, they're just absolutely wonderful. And, and your support here supports my family as well. So I'm truly grateful for everything that you do. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown?
Thank you.
And that is all the Laker Pride. Chair Franz.
Okay, next on our agenda is personnel items and I'm going to hand it over to Director Herman.
Thank you Chair Franz, members of the board. Tonight, we're bringing forward two additional staffing requests from the, sorry, from the Child Nutrition Fund, the O2 Fund, based on the increase in breakfast counts since the universal meals passed, the department is requesting one additional part-time helper to address the additional needs and one assistant manager, no, I'm sorry, a .75 part-time helper and a .75 assistant manager. Both of these additional costs will come out of the Child Nutrition Fund and the financial implications have been reviewed by Director Fredrickson. Open to any questions?
Okay, can I get a motion to approve the personnel items?
So made.
Second?
Second.
Director Burnick and, and Director Bullion. And can we open this up for any discussion or questions?
Yes, Director Herman, to be clear, so this is specifically for mornings for breakfast only or will these positions also have opportunities to, what does that look like for, for these specific positions?
Director Velazquez, I am not 100% positive on that response. I do know that the, the rationale behind it was the data for the breakfast count. So that would make sense that that would be a morning shift only. However, I can't state that with 100% confidence, so I will look into that and get back to the board.
Okay, with no other questions, Director Herman, I had one additional clarification that I believe I have an answer for, but are these existing people that we're extending time for or are these new people that we're bringing in?
Thank you Chair Franz, these would be new individuals that we would be hiring on.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, all in favor for the additional staffing? Aye. Any against? Okay, that passes seven zero. I don't have any unfinished business that we're aware of. Okay, so we're going to move on to new business. And the first item on the new business is the 2024 legislative approval. Before we go into that, I'm going to ask for a motion.
So made.
By Director Olsted. By? Second. Second by Director Bullion. Okay. Want me to hand this over to you, Dr. Thomas?
Sure, thank you Chair Franz. Couple of weeks ago at our, our work session, we walked through the 2024 legislative platform and essentially you'll see a very similar theme that we've carried forward. We've dropped various items that went through this last legislative cycle. I would say some points of emphasis is to have stabilized funding to not rob Peter to pay Paul. That's kind of happened in the past several sessions, particularly when it comes to school safety. So wanting to make sure that we keep our basic formula kind of exempt from any other expenditures and also continuing to have that tied to inflation. I would say that the addressing staff challenges and diversifying our workforce, we know that we have to be very innovative to ensuring that we are attracting and retaining high-quality staff that are relevant and reflective of the communities that they serve and also coming in with the content expertise to really push, you know, high outcomes for our kids. School safety, unfortunately, we continually hear about challenges throughout our country, throughout our world, around things that are impacting our school campuses, higher ed campuses, et cetera. And so this is something that's very top of mind for us. It's something that we'll be talking about in a proclamation later on this evening. So that's been an emphasis for us to ensure that we are maintaining that support. One area of difference here is that we've really pushed to broaden school safety to include cybersecurity. We are seeing more and more evidence of not only the physical safety issues that are top concern, but also the cyber breaches that are occurring and the ransom that continues to happen that bleeds out financially districts across the country. So that's something that we are really pushing for. And I know Marcus and his team are really on top of that and advocating at a state level for resources and supports here in our district. The continued support and increase for student support, generally speaking, we're going to support the academic aspects of our kids, but we also want to make sure that we're addressing the socially emotional needs of our kids. And we specifically called out related services, counselors, social workers, psychologists, deans, interventionists, et cetera. Those are the key areas that we really want to make sure that we have funding for those. And that would be on top of what we're getting through our base. So we are asking our state to recognize the additional needs that our students are bringing to our classrooms. And then lastly, just keeping the locus of control right here and reducing the unfunded mandates. This is something that we are really challenged in this last legislative cycle. We have about 70 or so, maybe even more items that we are tracking from the last legislative cycle that have unknown price tags and they are going to come with expectations to be funded. And it's not as though we have all the resources to accommodate for that. So we're going to have to be pulling from our general fund to address some of the mandates that also came from this last legislative cycle. What we are seeing in the next biennium is that any type of surplus that was anticipated is clearly showing that is not going to be there. I think we're going to be seeing somewheres in the neighborhood of about $80 million at the state level in the next biennium. And that's going to be split across how many hands out, right, for trying to get resources. So I don't think we're going to see a heavy funding cycle in this next session, but it's still something we want to make sure that whatever conversations come forward in that session, that we are not getting more mandates at the local level that the state expects us to pay from the resources that they have given us. So we effectively sometimes don't realize the impact of the resources because we have to pay for a lot of things that they are expecting us to cover. So that's generally a overview of where our platform lies and it's very much in sync with a lot of our other professional organizations as well.
Okay, open it up to discussion, questions, comments?
Yes, I have some comments. I apologize, I was not able to attend the study session due to a work conflict, but I did watch the meeting and I'm grateful for the changes that you made, removing the data practices. I do have a question as it is in regard to school safety. So in there, we had talked about how, hold on a second, I lost my, I lost my, I lost my, what you call it, this, my board book crashed, so it's, I'm bringing it back up. Okay, apologize for that. Under school safety, it says, remove language that categorizes SROs as agents of the school district. So I have reviewed the MSBA, there's hundreds of different legislative platform ideas within that platform. And the one thing that I thought, so even if we remove the language that categorizes, categorizes SROs as agents of the district, how does that protect our teachers when it comes to discipline, particularly when the language says that basically, the language of the law basically says that you cannot touch a student. And so what I've read in different legislative platforms is actually changing the language where it has to do with the wording of may use reasonable force when it is necessary.
Thank you Director Atkinson. So that does exist in the current legislation when imminent harm or death is perceived. So that can, so use of force can be used in those scenarios. I just wanted to bring our community into the conversation that we've had several times that in my years of experience, I have been in situations where in a matter of seconds, a student goes from zero to 100. And my ability as an educator to react, I need to do what I need to do at that moment because in a matter of seconds, it went from, things were just elevated to imminent harm. If I put myself and our colleagues choose as an SRO, as it currently stands, if we have an SRO inside of our school right now, they would not be able to take the appropriate trained action that they know so well to do to address the safety and wellbeing of that student or that environment. However, upon a 911 call, their colleague from the exact same precinct could come out and do whatever they needed to do to address that situation. So effectively, because of the current legislative language that deems SROs as agents of the district, they're bound by that notion that you just mentioned that you're inquiring about in terms of how we as staff. So that's been the biggest concern from our local municipalities of, of police. And so to, to really kind of bring that voice forward for what we need locally here, that was the change that needed to occur so that SROs would be one and the same as calling 911 and that could exercise the full reign of their training to ensure the safety of an individual or, or an environment. So that's why we have that.
Sure.
I'm sorry, but what is an SRO?
A school resource officer or you'll also hear us say school relationship officer. And, and yeah, the police officer in the school.
Great question.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I appreciate you adding context to that. And that is actually how a lot of school districts that are surrounding us have gotten away around the language of the law is by having the SRO, like you said, they're in the building, they are still employed by the district, but then they do call the 911 and call for backup. So that's actually a way that other districts have got around that. My concern, and I, maybe I wasn't clear, is that if the language of the law is not changed to say, because it used to say, may use reasonable force when it is necessary, if that, and then they changed it to basically say, I can just read it to be specific, but also added was the following language, "An employee or agent of a school district, including a school resource officer, security personnel or police officer contracted with the district, shall not inflict any harm, any form of physical holding that restricts or impairs a pupil's ability to breathe, restricts or pupils," and it lists them all out, right? So my question, I'm going to go back to how does that, if we don't, if we're not advocating for a change in the language that has to do with the restrictions, how does that protect our teachers or employees in our district? If they have to address an issue with a student, like you said, at the drop of a, a moment's notice, how does, if we don't advocate for a change in the actual language of the law, that impacts the action?
So the action is actually tied to the agency of the district, which is why that's, that's the hangup. Because if, if I'm no longer an agent of the district, I can, I can utilize my full training for staff to support staff, to support kids. So maybe I'm not hearing your question properly. So maybe I'm not hearing your question properly, but that's where the glitch of...
Right. But the language of the law still talks about the unemployed of the district. So I guess my biggest concern is...
Or, or, continue, read that part about agency in that.
Yeah, it does. And so I think we're talking about two different things here.
Okay.
I'm talking about where if we, if we ask the, our legislature to change the language that says may use, the language was changed where it says may use reasonable force when it is necessary. So they changed that to say these are all these restrictions. So my concern from the beginning of this conversation has been, how does this, how does this language protect our teachers in our district? Because at the end of the day, and our staff, they are the ones that are having to discipline these children, and if they cannot touch them and put themselves at legal harm...
So, so this language here...
That's my biggest concern, because we've seen it in our classroom.
Yeah, so this, so this...
I think of the time factor, isn't it?
This language here, that's in the, in the platform, doesn't apply to teachers. We're only talking about the SRO change.
I understand, yeah.
The other, the other changes with, with regard to staff members putting hands on kids and holds. Now, we don't ask, so if two students are fighting, we don't ask staff necessarily to jump into that. Many do, just because they're not going to allow that to continually occur. And again, we have imminent harm happening right there, so staff will try to restrain kids and separate them. That happens all the time. So are you asking, are you maybe advocating that language is in the platform to address the staff?
The language in the law. So when the statute was written, the law changed the reasonable force standard in schools. It previously said, "A school employee, school bus driver, or other agent of the district may use reasonable force when it's necessary." And that's the part of the law that changed.
Can I just, so one of the things that we talked about, and one of the things that I've been advocating, is that police officers need to be police officers. Okay? And when they're confined to that entire statute, and the legislature can come in and say, "As long as you're acting as agents of a school district, then you're confined to that law." And what we're trying to say is, we want them to be police officers first and foremost, and not be confined by that legislation in general, and be able to act appropriately according to their training, as long as they're classified as resource officers of a school, as agents of a school, as they are defined in that legislation. They, what happened before is they're actually kind of cut off at the knees sometimes by changes in legislature. And what we're saying is, if we have police officers in our school district, and even if we contract them, we want them not to be bound by that at all. We want them to act in the full capacity of being a police officer.
I fully, yeah, I fully understand that. And I think what I'm trying to communicate is that this has nothing to do with the agents of the district. It actually is a different part of the law, is that I think that it would be wise for us to say, to change the language back to say that, because an employee may use reasonable force when it's necessary. That's the part of the language that I'm advocating for. I'm not advocating for the SRO, I mean, yes, that's, I mean, that needs to change as well, but...
So is that something you could elaborate on, Director Herman, in terms of the, the law change and legislative change? Like, did that change the role of our teachers?
This didn't have any, this didn't have any impact on our staff.
That law change did not have an impact on staff.
No, that, that, that change has been around for 10-plus years.
Okay.
Yeah. This, this language was written specifically around SROs. That's, that was the tension point.
Okay.
So, well, I think, I think, I mean, I'm reading it right here, and it said, "The law changed the reasonable force standard in schools. It previously said, 'A school employee, school bus driver, or other agent of a district may use reasonable force when it's necessary to restrain a student or prevent bodily harm or death to another.'" The first "or" was removed to say they could use reasonable force when necessary to restrain a student, to prevent bodily harm or death from the student to, to another. So at the end of the day, I mean, we're not going to sit here and change the legislative, well, the word is, it's how the force is used, and it also impacts our employees. So...
I just want to, so what we're addressing here is the key word in there was agents of the school district, and we're asking for police officers to remove, to be removed from being considered agents of the school district. So that whole thing here, what we're asking is the school safety funding pays for school resource officers, and we're saying, we can call them whatever you want, but what we don't want them to do is be bound by that legislation, because the only change that occurred in the last legislative session was the stuff that actually, actually brought them in as agents and then hampered them from being police officers. So that's what we're trying to, that's the goal of this right here. I think you're talking about something a little bit that has been in place for a long time.
And you're advocating for that to be changed.
I'm asking, I'm advocating for the language of the law to go back to where it was so that our employees could be protected under the law. So I guess I'm just asking for a little bit more robust language under that school safety so it protects our employees as well.
So when did, when, how far back are you going back to?
No, just last year, the legislation.
I don't think the part about school employees has changed in quite some time. Where they, where we had the issue with the SROs is, is the change that, that actually made it so they couldn't do something, and we need them and their professional training to be able to come in and feel free to act appropriately. I don't...
It still does restrict an employee.
Sorry, sorry to interrupt. Chair France, if I can provide some clarity. Director Atkinson, are you referring to the restrictive procedures changes that were implemented, have always been in place for special education students, and this recent legislation applied it to all gen ed students? Is that maybe...
Perhaps, yes.
The area that you're referring to? So that area, our staff have been highly trained in the special education area for restrictive procedures when dealing with students on special, in special education. And those procedures and those restrictions have now carried to all of gen ed students, including the annual reporting procedures. So while staff have not been able to, or not been allowed to utilize some restrictive procedures, including prone restraints, for quite some time, the, the most recent changes have included extending the procedures, the training requirements, and the reporting requirements for all students, not just special education students. So I do, I do wonder if maybe that's what you're referring to, Director Atkinson.
That is correct, yes. Correct.
So if I understand...
Thank you for that, by the way.
Yeah.
I can read legal law all day, but that was, yeah, thank you.
So, so the only thing that really changed is the documenting to extend to general ed. But the, the staff is still, there's no need to advocate for anything regarding staff here?
Director Crosby, there has been changes in our training requirements for all staff. There have been, in addition to the reporting, and the training requirements provide the same restriction procedures that our special education staff have been using for students. But again, the, the inability to use a prone restraint has been in place for, I, I don't know the amount of years, but it has been in place for quite some time.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments, discussion, questions about any other areas of the legislative agenda?
I have one other comment, actually, and I apologize, I wasn't at that study session to add my feedback. But under the mandates, I guess, I, I've read some language, again, in the MSB platform. So we say oppose new, underfunded, or unfunded legislative mandates. And I like this language that I found in MSBA that says, urges the legislature to resist new statewide mandates, and if absolutely necessary, provide full funding for the implementation of the mandates, and annually review existing unfunded mandates and modify or appeal where possible. So basically, it's saying, like, any unfunded mandate, we want to basically go away or be addressed and receive funding for, for our district. So it's a little, again, a little bit more robust, and this was on the MSBA platform.
So I, I'm sorry. So I would say that the one aspect that, because I think we say that, what's missing is the, to basically fund it, to declare, give, give us the resources. If you do have mandates...
Even the current ones that we're currently dealing with, yeah. Because this year was a disaster with the unfunded mandates. And so how are we addressing the ones that we're dealing with currently that are impacting our, our budget? So are we, does this language address what happened this past legislative session? And are we advocating for funding to address those unfunded mandates from this past legislative session?
I, I wouldn't say we'd be able to answer all of that because we're tracking them and as they come...
What are we advocating for?
But I would say that's the one aspect that's missing in that bullet right there, to advocate for funding from the past cycle.
I don't want to speak for the executive team that was in there, but I know that I, for one, said, "We're not going to do something loose like just resist." I wanted as strong a language as possible, and we also tried to fit it, quite frankly, in this little PowerPoint to make it very easy. So instead of resist and, and, and try to fight against it, we just basically said oppose. We're opposed against any unfunded legislative mandates and new underfunded mandates.
I think the word is...
To try and, to try and, to try and get our point across is, we're not going to say we were against, or we resist, or whatever. We basically are going to start being very, very direct and try to use a more direct verb.
I appreciate that explanation. I did attend that executive committee meeting where I believe it was the three, Director Crosby, Director Burnak, and you, Director France, who were in there, who put together this platform with Dr. Thomas. I think the word "new" is the issue I have issue in here, oppose. So if you take out the word "new," you're basically opposing all underfunded or unfunded legislative mandates. And that could, that would basically state that.
So I'll open it up to the, the will of the board to, I, I think this is a clarification that can be easily adapted. I think the other piece about, around seeking funding for previously unfunded, I don't know how it was worded, but I'd certainly, you know, yield to the board so that we can make these quick corrections, if that's the, the direction you all want to go.
Yeah, my only observation, just that, that I'm looking at is, like, we're asking for funding in almost all these buckets to fund, to fund the mandates that they're talking about. Certainly not every single issue. I mean, you could say oppose new and existing. You could remove the word, but we probably do oppose new and existing.
New and existing actually captures, yeah, anything that's coming up in the next site, in the next session, as well as anything that came across this past legislative session. So...
I'd be fine with that. I think that would capture that, the intent.
Capture what you're, yeah.
Yep.
And I think, you know, we can, it's a little repetitive. I think that's fine. I think that's fine to be a little repetitive here.
I have no problem making as strong as possible. It's...
So if it's, if, if you all vote on this tonight with the caveat that it would, we would revise it to say new and existing, just, we can make that change.
What if we just said oppose all underfunded and unfunded legislative mandates, or just take out the word "new"? Because the more words we add into it, we are trying to make this into a talking point, and the longer you make the sentences, the harder it is to even describe, which is kind of the situation we ended up in when we tried to adopt the MSBA language, is they're fairly verbose in their language, and it, and also used, quite frankly, a little bit too much, maybe passive-aggressive terminology sometimes when they went through it. So getting a little bit more on the, on the command side of, we're done with unfunded and, underfunded, existing and new, just make a statement, oppose all underfunded or unfunded legislative mandates.
I'm comfortable with that.
I agree with that.
I'm comfortable with that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
All right.
I have that noted. Thank you, Board. We'll change that to reflect, if that's the will of the Board, then you all can vote on that with that caveat.
Okay. Okay, are there any other comments or questions with regards to legislative platform? Okay. I'm going to take a vote, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes 7-0. Okay. Now, we're going to move on to our next agenda item, which is the strategic plan roster approval. And I'm just going to read this out loud. "The first step in the strategic plan process was to ask stakeholders to apply to be part of our strategic plan core, uh, core team that will meet five times between January and May. The purpose of the application process was to ensure we have a representative sample of staff, parents, students, and community members serving on the core team. We are asking for Board approval of the roster." And I'm going to hand this over to Dr. Thomas to, to re-explain the process that we've already discussed with our consultant, as well as in our study sessions.
Thank you, Chair France, Board Directors. So tonight, what you see here is our recommendation to the Board of about 52 individuals throughout our community. I think throughout our discussions of planning, we had targeted around 40 to 45. When we saw the amount of applicants coming through, there was just a lot, it was hard to say no. There were just a lot of good folks that applied to be a part of this team, but also trying to keep it, you know, manageable where we're not, not able to build consensus, et cetera. So I did talk with Casey from Studer, just to see how comfortable, from her experience with strap planning and working with teams, I asked if 52, or in that 50 range, would be something that she thought would be manageable. She absolutely thought she could do that, but no more. And so we thought we would get additional representation in this committee. We, we as a senior cabinet looked at the entire applicant pool and also the information contained in the application process, and we reviewed that with the Board here a month or so ago, the, the questions that they would answer. And a very good opportunity for us to learn a little bit about our candidates through their experiences, whether it was their work experiences, their involvement with, throughout the community, through, you know, identifying whether they're a parent, or if they have kids in the district, or a grandparent, or a business owner, et cetera. We try to diversify the perspectives based upon what we saw here on the roster. You know, we, kind of like when you're applying, you may know something about a candidate, but if they say something that's not part of the application process, we wanted to try to be as objective as possible. So, you know, one of the things that we took into account was, were they on any, you know, Board committees? So we tried to not pull folks from who were currently on a Board committee to come onto this committee so that we could, you know, add more perspectives and more voices throughout that process. We also tried to bring historical perspectives, folks who have been in our district for a long time. I think there are two individuals who are former Board Directors from many years ago to carry on some historical information, bringing that forward, moving into a new strap plan. And then we have folks who, you know, are brand new to our district as well. We are probably looking at about a two-to-one ratio of community members to staff, and so we wanted to keep this heavier on community than it would be on staff. And then all of senior cabinet is, are ex officios, so they're not in, they're not active participating members, but would be available in there on resource. So that's the, that's the roster that you have, so similar to what you all have gone through with the Teaching and Learning Committee and the Policy Committee. This is the roster that we present to you for your consideration.
Okay. So before we open the discussion, I just want to remind people that these are individuals who have volunteered to serve time with, with our district to help us become better. And because they are individuals, I want you to keep in mind to not mention them by name, to respect their privacy, and also respect the fact that they did throw their name into the bucket to, to dedicate their time to this process. So I'm going to open up the Board to any discussion with the obligation of being respectful to the individuals on the list.
Okay, Jess.
I was curious in reviewing all of this, I think it's a darn good list. Is something, it's more...
Is something, it's more a procedural question, since this is considered an ad hoc committee, does the Strategic Plan Review Core Team have some kind of a charter or something that, similar to our teaching and learning and our policy and finance?
There is no charter. Their charter is to create a strategic plan for the district. But no, there wasn't a request to have a formal charter written.
Like I said, procedural question. For full transparency, Dr. Thomas, could you share which Board Directors were part of the selection process for the strategic core team?
So I consulted with the Board Chair and Vice Chair. The previous Board Chair and Vice Chair, after we had about 95% of the individuals selected, brought the list forward. There were some individuals on, on the list that we, nobody really knew anything about and inquired about that with the current, or the previous Board Chair and Vice Chair, and that's it. But that was, I would say, 95 plus percent was done with the senior cabinet in terms of identifying.
And do you have, it's my understanding we'll have senior cabinet involved in this, but in an ex officio?
Yes.
Do you want to elaborate on that?
The senior cabinet will not occupy seats. They will serve in an ex officio capacity, meaning they are there based upon being senior leaders in the organization and will serve as a resource.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then another question is, you had mentioned, and I know we talked about this in our study session, that it is wonderful to see some new names on this list to give a fresh perspective. And you had mentioned that if people have, are either currently serving on a committee or have served in a, on a committee in the past whatever amount of years, that they would, shall we say that they're.
Try to balance.
Try to balance, right. Well, I do, there are two people on this list that currently serve on the Equity Committee. So, and then there's four people on the list who were part of the 2017 Facilities Task Force that Amy Crosby, I know that you served on that committee as well. So can you help me understand why those members would be selected over other members? Who, I know there's a particular member in our community who has applied to every single committee that we have had open, and she has not been selected. And she was on the Facilities Task Force back in the day. And so I guess, without having visibility to all the applicants, which I did request, because I don't feel that, I can, I don't feel like I can truly look at this list and say, yes, these are the best applicants for our strategic planning committee. Yes, I do believe they represent diverse perspectives in our district. Without having visibility to the actual applicants who applied, I feel like I don't have enough information here to be able to make a good decision on this, to be honest with you.
So I would say that there are individuals that have had some overlap. I know one individual that was on a committee, reached out and wanted to withdraw because the passion around this was greater. And so I know that, that individual kind of asked to no longer be a part of a committee to be considered for this. Folks who have served on a 2017, honestly, if that wasn't captured on the resume or the application, because we didn't ask if, you know, did you serve on whatever that committee was?
Chair Crosby would have known because she was on the committee.
Right, but we, we actually brought a lot of this forward, already formulated for the Board. We didn't actually seek approval from the Board Chair, Vice Chair. There were just some outliers that we didn't really have eyes on or really know and wanted to get perspective. But there is some overlap. With 70 or so people, we're not going to have 100% clean applicants in terms of having never participated. There's some, you know, importance to having some continuity across work that they've done with the district as well as having new perspectives. So I think we've got a good balance of new voices, many new voices, and we have a balance of folks who have been around in our district. And we have a balance of a variety of roles, too. So that's, that's what I would, that's how I would characterize the list.
And I'll just add that, to my recollection, okay, my recollection, the 2017 Task Force was really large, and I don't remember everyone on it at all.
It was 28 members. I looked at it today. I compared the lists.
So, so maybe the, the work I recall doing involved a lot of people. So they must have, that must have been in partnership, which you would both remember because you were serving at the time with administration and staff, because we definitely had more than 28 people involved.
Well, there was a core team.
We didn't vote on the members at that time. We trusted the process, and I wasn't a member. Plus, the meetings were closed, so I wouldn't have known. So that's, I can't really say anything, but I do know the process. And, and it seemed to work really well. I could just speak for me and say that one of the objectives of bringing the final list to us was, our questions, or my question was basically, do we have balance between elementary, middle, high school? Do we have balance and the staff, too, to make sure we had teachers that were willing to serve from the various areas within our, within our community also, who are part of the district, to make sure we have that balance? That was the primary concern, and, and it was answered because I didn't.
What about, what about respecting diverse perspectives?
Well, that was, that was the primary concern, but I, but we also trusted the process of the administration.
Yeah, I think from, from a diverse perspectives, from diversity of thought, diversity from community that they might represent, et cetera, I think we did capture that. When, when you look at that roster, there are folks from every facet of our community. I would say from folks who might have a very open liberal view to folks who I would say have a very open conservative view. I would say there are white individuals, there are people of color, there are people who speak multiple languages. Every teacher that applied is on, every student that applied is on. We, you know, unfortunately, we didn't have a lot, so that was a priority as well. So I, yeah, I would say from our conversation as a senior staff and being newer to the community and listening to our senior staff as well, because they have knowledge of interacting and working with these folks in different capacities or know of them, or, you know, whether it's, you know, former parents or community members that they know. Yeah, I'm very confident that we have very divergent perspectives on this committee, very similar to what I would say that our Teaching and Learning Committee has. And, you know, one of the things that I think is going to be really important is that not only the work of developing a strategic plan, really critically important, but it's also a opportunity for us as a community to model with a large group of individuals that come from all walks of life, who have very differing views of what does it look like when we collaborate on behalf of our, our students to drive home a plan that will set forth strategic goals for the next five years or so. So very, very excited about that. And I think we do have a very diverse team with diverse perspectives.
Yeah, and I would just say that the two people that are on the Equity Committee currently, I'm, I'm most challenged with those two because I think that they're, I mean, I've had several people reach out to me disappointed that they weren't selected. And like I said, one individual who's applied for every single committee, and she did serve on the 2017 Task Force. So why are we having, I mean, why, why are two people who currently serve on the Equity Committee on this roster? When I think we were pretty clear that, that we wanted new, we wanted new perspectives.
And we do have new perspectives on this committee. And I can speak to one of them, I'm assuming that you're speaking about is, is, has expressed an interest on this committee of greater importance. So technically, there's one. And I don't want to sound like we're playing a shell game here, but that was something that we took into account. But again, I don't, I don't believe the will of the Board was to say, if you've ever participated on a committee, that you can't serve on this committee. I think we wanted to make sure we had diverse voices, new voices, which I think we have both on this committee.
I think it's a pretty simple, is there one or is there two? I guess I would like to know. I can pull up my Equity roster.
There's two.
There's two.
Okay. And that wasn't decided ahead of time?
Did, did one of them, you said, though, isn't currently on it or resigned?
I know, I know of one individual who reached out with the application with the intent to express their interest to participate in this and not the Equity Committee.
Okay, so basically, we have one on the Equity Committee then?
There's, there's two that are currently on the Equity Committee. Jessica, or Director Olsted, you are on the head of that committee. There are two people on this roster that are on the Equity Committee currently.
But one of them did step down?
No, that is not correct.
One of those two did step down?
Well, we're speculating because we're not talking names.
Okay, yeah. I, I'm just wondering, is, are we dealing with a net of one if they said they were going to step down? I don't know. I'm not, I didn't see the roster, so for the equities, but I'm just trying to clarify.
I know of one. I don't know who the other one.
Oh, okay.
And I don't know of anybody who has resigned their spot on the Equity Committee right now.
I know of one.
So I, I'm, I'm not arguing. I just, I, I don't know of anybody who stepped down from Equity to be on this committee. Again, with all having visibility to the full list, it's really hard for me as a Board Director to have, you know, a say on, is this a diverse perspective? Are there all the diverse perspectives represented, represented on this committee? I know personally, like I said, I'm disappointed that there's a couple of people that did not make the committee. I'm also disappointed that, per Policy 203, that it clearly says, Board Directors shall establish, that Board Directors should receive the same information and data which are necessary for decision-making. And I don't feel that I have a proper amount of information to put together and vote on a strategic plan, planning team, which is critical to our district to make sure that we have diverse perspectives represented. I'm clearly not going to be on the committee because I'm not part of the executive team. So how is a large majority of our community going to be represented in this committee? I personally would like to recommend that every Board Director at this table gets to look at that roster and pick two more people to be on this committee. And I think that would bring diverse perspectives, just like Jess, when you and I sat and did the Teaching and Learning Committee, there's a reason why that committee has diverse perspectives. Because Jess and I, very equitably picked and determined with Dr. Dan Edwards, who would be on that committee? And it's a robust, diverse committee.
And that's what our senior cabinet did and brought our consultation to the Board Chair and Vice Chair. I guess that would be the equivalent of the two from the team as you two reps. And I, I guess I'm curious, I don't recall the Board requesting the entire roster of the TNL or the Policy Committee to make a vote for those committees, which are Board Committees. Maybe you did, but did the Board, was that a requirement?
No, we did not.
So, so again, I guess I'm trusting our senior cabinet to have done the exact same process. Dan was part of this, and you can attest if this was a parallel process to TNL of looking at applicants to ensure that we have balance and varied perspectives, that we didn't bring on a group of folks to be an echo chamber to the district. I think we have folks on this committee who are going to push and pull one another to do what's best for kids.
Yeah, I would, I would definitely agree with that statement. And I would also add, in alignment with having sat on both processes, being a part of choosing of membership for the Teaching and Learning Advisory in consultation with two Board Representatives who serve at that committee as well. Likewise, in this case, very similar process.
And I think, too, this is an ad hoc committee. This isn't a Board Committee. This isn't, I mean, I'm, I'm not privy, nor do I need to be privy to the, the meeting that was mentioned, you know, in our open forum that's happening tomorrow. That's an ad hoc committee. I had no knowledge of who's on that committee unless they volunteered that information to me. And that's an ad hoc committee. So I, I didn't see who was put on that committee.
So I'm actually going to ask, is it the will of the Board that, that, that we receive a full list prior to voting on this? Because I don't, I wasn't privy to it, but I, I didn't hear of anyone asking for it. But then again, I was Vice Chair, so I don't know if anyone asked.
I believe you're on the email, Vice Chair.
There is one, there is one, but I don't get everybody.
And you were on the email.
Yeah, so there was.
Actually, I would actually like to state that I would feel uncomfortable getting the entire list because I think it would force me to make some assumptions about individuals that I don't have the ability to make assumptions about. I will volunteer out here. There is one person, actually two. There's a city leader and one other person that's actually in my own personal contacts because of my professional job. But otherwise, I don't know any of these names. And the only way that I would be able to surmise whether they're diverse or not is to judge something, either in a social media site or through somebody else's information they pass along to me. So I would feel very uncomfortable with that process because I can't, I don't think it makes sense to put ourselves into an arena that we are forced to make assumptions. And I trust our executive leadership in our district to do that job for me. So that would be my professional opinion.
And I appreciate that. And I would just say, like, I mean, just like looking at a resume. I mean, you guys received information about people's qualifications. I know that someone applied who works for one of our largest employees in our district is a senior level HR Director who does strategic planning day in and day out and was not selected. So I, I guess my point is, is how do I make a decision of that this, these are the most qualified people? I mean, yes, I am going to trust the process. I've been, I've been hearing that all, for weeks, trust the process. You have to trust the process. I'm sorry, I'm more of a trust and verify kind of person. So the information that I requested is public data. And I requested it for a reason because I felt like I needed it in order to make a decision. I don't want to be judged for requesting information. It's going to continue, Chair France, so.
I'm going to ask Director Velasquez, do you, I've heard from three Board Members now. What are your thoughts? Do you require the full applicant list in order to make a vote and a decision on this tonight?
I do not, nor have I for any of the other committees that we have voted on.
Okay, so I'm hearing that it's not the will of the Board to submit, to see or receive the full applicant list. And going forward, I'm, is there any other discussion points? Are there any other questions, concerns, or comments?
I just had one question. The students listed, the four students listed, are they all high school students?
They are.
Any other questions or comments?
Yes, I would like to see if it's the will of the Board that every Board Director, so that we can ensure diverse perspectives are represented, that every Board Member can go back and look at the list of applicants and choose two additional people to add to this list.
Okay, so I'm going to ask Director Olsted, do you want to see the full applicant list to add two additional people?
No.
Director Crosby?
No.
Director Burnak?
No.
Director Boyan?
No.
Director Enrique, Director Velasquez?
No, I do not want to deviate from the process we've already established.
Okay, so it is then the will of the Board that we are not going to do that. And if everybody's okay, I'm going to go ahead and call for a vote. All in favor of the strategic plan roster?
Aye.
Against?
No.
Okay, that passes six one. All right, on to the next. Trying to figure out where we are here, excuse me. So after the strategic plan roster, the, we're going to go on to a report. I do not believe Board action is required here. So I'm not sure who's going to take this early day, oh, there we go, sorry. The early release day report by Director Edwards and Director Zombush.
All right. Thank you, Chair France, members of the Board, Dr. Thomas. We wanted to provide with, provide to you an update as promised. After having a series of our early release days allowed an opportunity to share with you some of the highlights of what that work has looked like. We have now had three early release days to date. And as a reminder, we, new this year, are having monthly early release dates that were, was approved by the Board in December of 2022 for the school calendar this year. Again, we, that gift of time has been invaluable and much needed. And we've taken opportunity to do a lot of great work thus far. That additional staff development time has given us, as we talked about when proposing, having opportunity to look at our student needs on a monthly basis, whether it be assessment data, for example, that will be coming up in. Whether it be assessment data, for example, that will be coming up in February, and I'm forecasting in my, in our presentation here, but, but going back to FastBridge data, we take the FastBridge assessment three times a year, we have that data. We have quarterly data at the end of, at the secondary level, for example. Quarterly grades are significant source of data. We obviously have other sources of data that we reference, and this opportunity has given us a chance to do that. We also have, and I can't minimize the importance and significance of this. We have new curricula that come online, and that trend will continue. So this year, at the elementary level specifically, the implementation of our Bridges Math Curriculum, this has given us an opportunity for carved out time to focus our energies to support that implementation. Moving forward, once again forecasting into the upcoming school year, I don't want to go too far ahead, but we'll also be having the implementation of new science curriculum at the elementary level. We have the implementation at certain grade levels in the middle school of implementation of new science curriculum. We also have some pilot curriculum going on in math. And as you know, we have the REDACT on the horizon, that we are pulling together the committee this spring to forecast and, and plan forward so that we will be prepared to utilize our early release time next year to do some of that work as well. Additionally, staff who are not in the traditional classroom subject areas that I've just previously mentioned, also opportunities for other staff to engage, specifically our paraprofessionals, to be a part of an every other month training, to get some of the important training that they need to continue to successfully do their work, as well as other specialized groups of folks who now have time carved out that we can pull together and do some outstanding work. So really want to emphasize the importance of our appreciation for this additional time that's been given and the great work that's been done to date.
Good evening, Chair Franz, Director of the Board, Dr. Thomas. This chart here just gives a little bit of an update by early release that we've had so far, as well as by level, the major topic areas that we have covered during the early release days. I'll speak a little bit on the improvement cycle that we have implemented for our early release days. This is based on improvement science. It's the Plan Do Study Act cycle. And here we have a very tight schedule on how to implement this because the early releases are coming very fast. Basically, by the time we're done with one, we're planning very detailed on the next one. So in our planning phase, we develop the content in collaboration with, we have a team doing this. It consists of building principals, teacher leaders, and then members of the LEI Department. We then execute whatever that plan is for our early release day. And then on our study side, we take teacher and staff feedback. We, every single time we have an early release, there's a feedback survey to ask what went well and what teachers plan or staff plan on implementing and what they would like to see in the future. And we have a debrief meeting where we're looking at every line item of that data with the people who planned and executed that early release professional development. And then the ACT is where we take that revision as long, as well as our year-long plan and really draft and/or revise our professional development for the next month. Again, this is, it, it took a little, as any improvement cycle, it took a little time to get up and running and to get this cadence in place. But now we feel confident that we have that cycle kind of down and planned out for the rest of the year. I've been doing what's called a sentiment analysis. I've been giving all staff an open-ended survey about their experience with our professional development. And again, we, we go through every line of feedback, all of the facilitators and the, and the planning team. But here, there's a lot of different analyses that we are doing. But here I just wanted to show that really after we implemented this PDSA cycle and had a really good chance to dig into information as a full team, we were able to change our process a little bit in the format of our early release, particularly at the elementary level for our third opportunity. And here you can see that the sentiment really went up. And so our most recent, I would say, formula for how to structure that time was very, very positively received, and we're going to use that momentum to build the rest of the ones for the remaining, remainder of the year. Here's a similar chart as what you saw and what we have done so far. This is looking forward to the next three. Again, these are tentative because we do implement that PDSA cycle. And if there's any feedback that would put us into a slightly different direction, we would make that shift. But here's basically the overarching plan for the next ones. As Dr. Edwards mentioned, February is going to be a big time of looking at that mid-year FastBridge data in terms of growth and levels for, for mid-year. And then also connecting that to our Bridges curriculum.
One, one thing I'd like to add about process in addition to the team that was pointed out earlier here in the plan cycle, that teachers are included, the built process. As we've talked about before, our building instructional leadership teams guide this work in consultation with principals and consultation with other team members. The other piece that I wanted to talk about as we look forward, we just, you just had conversation and adopted the core planning team for the strategic upcoming strategic planning team. We also are engaged, and we've talked about the learner profile in previous Board Meetings, utilizing World Savvy as a resource to help us develop that. That will be coming out to our staff in the February and, March and April, spread out to each. We have a schedule that we'll be sharing with principals with a focus at the secondary level in February. A portion of that time, in addition to the data that is noted up here, will be committed to that and at the elementary level in March and April. We also have, as I also previously alluded to here, the possibility of giving some updates to staff as we wrap up the year around REDACT implementation that might come out of the REDACT Committee during the course of February and March and April, possibly utilizing some of that time at the May early release to give some updates, as well as planning forward at the elementary level with science curriculum. Just a couple of big bucket areas that we envision as we wrap up the year with this year's early release focuses for our staff. With that, certainly engage in, if there are any questions that we can provide additional clarification on.
I have a question. On the graph for the average sentiment score, can you tell me what the numbers on the left side signify?
Yeah, here, the sentiment basically ranges from a positive two to a negative two. There's a little bit of a key on the right-hand side of that scale. So the, a two across the board would be everyone is incredibly, is very positive versus very negative. So we started the year, you know, a little bit above that neutral line. And then kind of as we got our cadence down, we saw a big upward shift in our sentiment. And when you look at evaluating professional development, there is a lot of different phases to it. But the first thing we need to ensure is that teachers are engaged and that they're positively receiving the professional development. After that point, then you might start looking at change in instruction or change in student outcomes down the road. But this is the, you know, the real proceeding, like this has to be in place, and teachers have to positively receive the professional development in order for it to make any sort of other changes. So knowing that we have this improvement here, I think we can then start to think about some of the other impacts down the road of, of the professional development. But this is phase one for looking at.
And can you share how many teachers, how many staff members gave feedback? Like maybe a percentage, or if you don't have that exactly, maybe a guess of the percentage of how many teachers actually gave feedback on it?
Yeah, it's, I believe our total data set is 500 respondents from the three. So it's, it's an optional thing. It's something that we're asking teachers to do, but it's, we can't require them to do that. So we probably do get a little bit of the response where, you know, people that are particularly happy or particularly unhappy or tend to be responding. But this, that's why this is one piece of information. We have that full committee with principals and those who are administering the professional development because we take all of that information into account when we're looking at it, not just the, the teacher feedback. So a lot of it is based on the reception that is, is given as well. So it's, it's kind of like with all of our data, this is one piece of data. It would be great if every teacher responded to every survey, but that's not realistic. So just encouraging, and I think over time, if we, with any survey, if you show that you're using the information for improvement purposes, that will increase buy-in and response to the survey. So our hope would be over time that there would be an increase in feedback as well.
I just want to emphasize the importance of this trend that we, we are seeing here. That is certainly a trend that we expect to continue on and to maintain that positive experience because once again, we know, as Dr. Zombush pointed out, that when folks respond in a positive way to the nature of what's being done, the impact will become positive. And we are, we have a high level of confidence in that. And I think that it is one tool that helps that. But we definitely have anecdotal feedback that our principals contribute to that conversation, that our BILTS contribute to that conversation, that our LEI representatives who are delivering hear from folks, not only on the day of, but on the days following. I think all of that feedback informs our practice as we make adjustments moving forward.
I appreciate that. And I'm just going to read my notes from when going through the packet. I just, I appreciate the, the added context and all of that and understanding that, you know, like you said, it's one piece of information. But I know that there are conflicting views among community members regarding early release, early release days being positive or negative. And so I appreciate the report. I know that the teachers appreciate the gift of time as the, you know, release dates are called. But being able to weigh the various opinions to student progress would also, you know, be really valuable. And I understand that we need time to tell that. But I think, you know, when we're thinking about student success and, and all of what that looks like, I know that student success looks different for every student and every family, actually. So just, you know, making that comment, it was that, you know, there is, the community has varying feedback regarding early release days as well.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up. I think definitely important that we continue to take into account and that we bring forward, which is why we're doing this report tonight, the value that we are seeing, that our staff are seeing, and that the need for that because of the upcoming demands that we have not only have been placed on us, i.e. REDACT implementation, for example, but we place on ourselves. I go to the math. We have committed and spoken numerous occasions at this, at this table about the importance of raising our scores. In order to do so, we needed, we identified we needed new curricular resources. We needed new teaching strategies, and we needed to train our teachers to implement both. And I really feel that we are experiencing some great progress in that and feel that we are going to be utilizing the lessons learned through this process this year with the math as we move forward into other content areas. And right now I'm speaking to the elementary specifically. But also, we are increasing our use of data at the secondary level. For example, at the high school level for the first time, implementing our use of FastBridge data and utilizing that data for all students in addition to the quarter two or end of quarter grade data that we have. So bringing additional sets of data to the table, as well as one of the things that we didn't go into great specificity on, but back on this slide when we referenced the elementary deans and elementary specialist teachers talking about discipline data, for example, so, and classroom climate data around that. So all of that has been a part of that work thus far, and will continue.
Thank you. Any other questions? Go ahead.
So I know with the, the graph again, you talk about the sentiment specifically for elementary. How is the sentiment varied from release one, two, and three for middle school and high school?
Yeah, it's a little bit, you can see that line overall is a little bit lower than the elementary. So the, the middle school and the high school didn't see as much of an increase in that sentiment. I think part of that is related to the fact that a lot of our early release planning, due to the math implementation, has been focused as a, as a system. You know, we have seven elementaries and we're looking for consistency across those seven buildings. So it takes a lot more planning to, to do that at the elementary level. And with the curriculum adoption, that's an added layer of planning that's been going into the elementary. So I think moving forward, and you can correct me if you have a different perspective, but I think moving, that was the most immediate need out of the gate with our schools, knowing that now the middle school and the high school are going to be receiving, you know, additional supports and planning. And it's not that, I mean, their early releases were well-planned and all of that. But I think just the immediacy of our resources went in the beginning of the year towards elementary. And I think over time we'll be working more towards secondary. I also think, you know, I've read all 500 comments, and I think there's, there's a balance as well because I think there's some staff that would like to use this time for something different than what we have been allotted this time to use it for. So there's a balance a little bit in the sense that there are individuals who would like to use this time for something other than what we are being held accountable for, for that time. So that's a challenge as well, I think, through all of this is that we have to both provide a professional development model that is relevant and applicable to teachers, but it also has to maintain the, the requirements that we have for this time.
And I would just add, be responsive as well to the point with regard to the secondary focus that they, I know specifically, I can speak to some adaptations and adjustments that they are making at each of our secondary buildings based upon that feedback in this upcoming early release day for staff, which will be this Wednesday.
I have a question. Can you comment? I took a visit to one of the middle schools and asked these questions specifically to one of the administrators. And one, one piece of information that I gleaned, and you might be able to comment on it, and I don't know how much of it relates to it, but he talked about that teachers used to meet on these days with like their departments. And now they're actually meeting with like English, Math, Science, and they're following the student and that they're able to see the patterns. Like if I have a student in my class that's sleepy or, they're able to do that. And that I feel like came out of, these discussions have been allowed because of this time dedicated. Is that correct or incorrect?
Yeah, no, that's great. We refer to that as team time, and different definitions of teams exist. And we have been missing that at the middle school level specifically for a number of years. This has given us an opportunity. They actually began some of that work using learning teams to also be not only department and grade level specific, but also across departments within a grade level opportunity. And this has provided that opportunity to engage, for staff to engage with cross-disciplinary teaching members from a grade level. And so that definitely, and actually that is something that also is done. You've heard us talk previously about the BAR program at the high school with ninth grade teachers, a similar model implementing at the middle school level aligned with that.
I'm assuming there's some tracking of this too, but you know, it's there somewhere.
Most definitely, yes. And that's one of the things we're working on with the increase of the usage of, specifically at the high school, the FastBridge. Many conversations, and we could have invited Gus up here to talk about this, but we, we'll just, in the sake of time, we'll just move forward with that their awareness just, in the sake of time, we'll just move forward with, uh, that their awareness of their reading abilities. This is an anecdotal share, but I've heard it across many conversations at the high school. Now that they have this data in front of them, we're gonna be working with them, maybe you want to expand on this at all, um, but we're gonna be working with them, what to do with that data and, and working on strategies, instructional strategies to support students now that we know that information.
I have a couple of questions. Um, first of all, I'm happy to hear that you did the survey and that you're, you read the comments and you're listening. Um, honestly, when I first reviewed this, I was not surprised because I personally have not met one person who's happy with the half-days. And so, teachers, staff, community members, parents, students, um, at the high school and the impact it's had on their, um, Laker Day, on their half-day. These results to me are not impressive to go to, at a point five of just below po- just, just above positive. And, um, so my question is, is that, you know, I have like three questions. At what point do we look at this and go, this is not working? And maybe we look at, um, a different model? Um, how long do we give this before we really evaluate it and say, you know, meeting a just above po- or just below positive is, is something that's working for our district?
Well, um, the next item on our agenda is approval of the, of the, some adjustments to the calendar, and I'll speak to a little bit about that in that particular item, uh, specific to Laker time. Uh, but I would say that, uh, it has been our practice to adopt the calendar for the upcoming year in the November, December, uh, timeframe. Um, if that was the will, that we wanted to look differently and make adjustments further, um, certainly we could consider that, but as we talked about at, uh, the November meeting, um, we have limited, uh, adjustments from an instructional hours perspective. I'll talk more about that in the next agenda item. But I think, uh, that sustaining this for the duration of this school year into next year, we'll be able, again, this is only after three opportunities. We will have a more complete evaluation at the conclusion of this school year. We will have had a full cycle of these, and then next year, prior to the establishment of the school calendar for the subsequent school year, we will have had a full year plus some months of implementation. Um, that, that trend, I would expect that trend to continue in a positive way.
Thank you. And then, um, my second question is, at what point are we going to survey our parents, um, and our community members? I think that's one thing that's really important to note, is that any school, any school that uses our bus service is impacted by this because, um, schools like St. Mike's and also Aspen Academy, they also adopt our same calendar. And so, I've heard grumblings from that community as well, is that these half-days are impacting their students as well and the parents and, um, as, you know.
Yeah, that's certainly something we can, uh, take into consideration as we move forward and gather additional feedback around that.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? And first of all, I just also want to thank you for this report and thank you for the diligence. I know that there's a lot of work on your plate in preparing for these, and I heard clearly that after the early release, you made some adjustments, and after the second early release, you make some adjustments. And I assume that as you continue to polish the process and take feedback for what's working and what isn't working from elementary, middle, and high school, uh, that it will continue to grow. Um, I'm glad it was not below zero on the sentiment analysis. I think that's a positive sign right off the bat. So, um, I know that we are all learning as this process matures. So, thank you very much. Any other comments or questions? Okay, moving on to the next. I'm sorry, go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, thank you so much for the, for the presentation and the details, just kind of looking at the longitudinal sentiment analysis and then also looking at the work that has happened or even going back a little bit further to, why did it even come about? There's just that tacit recognition that there was a disconnect between our, our staff and their students and not having enough time to be able to do that hard work on, on hours, on staff time. Um, so I think some of the results also reflect that there's a lot of hard work that needed to happen. Uh, it doesn't necessarily feel good, but I would look at, what are the outcomes that came from it? Um, so that'd be something great to add at some point in the future, or even when we do the final review of not only did people feel it was positive, but what were the outcomes? How did we actually drive some of those successes? Thank you.
Sorry about that, Director Velazquez. All right, um, everybody, no more comments or questions? Okay, we're gonna move on to the discussion of the self-funded insurance update, uh, with Director of Administrative Services Herman. Um, again, no board action is requested. Uh, this is informational only.
Members of the board, um, Dr. Thomas, thank you for your time today. Um, based off of some updates that we've been getting, um, from the self-funded, um, insurance networks that we belong to, we thought it'd be a good idea to just give an update to the board on our self-funded insurance plan and what it means to be, um, self-funded, since it's been quite a while since we made that switch. And, um, just give some opportunity to ask any questions that you may have of us on that. So, what does it mean to be a self-funded medical plan? Um, really, at the end of the day, it means that we have all the reward and we have the risk. So, all of the premiums that are paid into a health, uh, plan goes into our account. Um, we then pay any sort of, um, PBM or administrator, and we pay the claims cost. And anything that we collect more than premium stays with the district's account, and then that offsets any future premium increases that we could potentially have. On the flip side, if our claims are more than what we've got, what we've gathered, then we have to go into our fund balance for the medical insurance plan that we keep a certain percentage of, at least forty percent of expected costs. Um, and then we talk about increasing our premiums for the next year. So, at the end of the day, after all of the claims are paid, the remaining funds stay in the, um, in the account, or we go into the health insurance fund balance to, to pay those, those extra claims. So, the district has been, um, self-funded since July 2021. Um, prior to that, our average increase in health insurance was nine point fourteen percent increase per year. And there are four years that they saw, we saw double-digit increases in our health insurance. It prompted the administration at that time to reach out and talk about, um, switching over to, to self-funded with our consultants, and made that switch in 2011. Since 2011, our average increase in health insurance premiums has been three point two four percent, which is significantly lower than what it was seen last time and what our insurance consultants tell us is significantly lower than the industry averages. Also, since switching our dental insurance to self-funded, we have seen a zero percent increase in our insurance premiums for our active employees since 2011, being able to utilize that plan to keep the, um, the cost down. So, um, why does this, why, why does this type of plan benefit our members? Is, we do have the risk associated with it, but we also get to keep the funds there. So, when our employees go out and they make wise choices with their insurance plan, for example, making a cost, um, decision on where to get their prescriptions, going someplace that's gonna save money versus going someplace that's gonna be a lot more money, we at the end of the day, as an entire, um, district and plan, get to see that, that reward. Whereas if we were fully funded, an employee making those decisions would never reap the benefits from that because that, that reward wouldn't be seen for us. It's a, it's a lower cost to the plan administration because we have that self-funded, um, risk that's on us versus paying another organization to keep that in place. And we're not paying for the insurance provider's profit margin and risk change with that. It also allows us greater flexibility and opportunity for our members to drive plan changes. So, we have the insurance committee that meets throughout the school year to talk about the plan, talk about how it's, um, operating, discuss any plan design changes, discuss what the increase in, um, percentages would be versus if we were, um, fully funded, those different decisions would be driven mainly by our vendor. So, as we discussed, there's some risk with that, that we would just want to make sure that we're being transparent around. Um, so the risk involved the increase in health cost, healthcare costs is a significant concern that we're constantly monitoring. Um, and especially with prescription cost, there's significant increases and, um, risk that is, um, associated with that. Also, there's been some significant changes in the vendor market. We just saw this, that happened to us this year. We previously were with Preferred One, they were bought out, we're now with UMR, and we're navigating some significant trials and tribulations with that, that change. So, we have to navigate that risk when it comes to switching an insurance vendor. And then, since we are self-funded, if we have a high claimant cost, we only have our network that covers that cost. Whereas if we were the fully funded plan with a huge network, that looks a little bit different. So, if we do have a couple of individuals that end up costing a couple million dollars here and there, that risk is on our plan. And so, it really gets monitored and our stop-loss gap, our stop-loss gap insurance can fluctuate quite significantly. The other major item and the reason why we wanted to bring this to your attention to give you update, is there's significant concerns with mega specialty pharmacy coming down the pipeline. There's very significant pharmaceuticals costs out there. So, while we do have stop-loss insurance, which means if a claimant goes above two hundred thousand and, and claims, our plan stops paying for it and our insurance vendor that we go through starts paying for it, next year and the following years after that for a twenty-four month period of time, their premiums they're gonna start charging us are gonna raise significantly. And so, we've seen it in some districts where they've had one claim, one prescription, significantly increased their stop-loss gap, because that one prescription was over three million dollars. So, we're looking at ways that we can navigate all of these different risks. So, one tactic that we use is resources to promote preventative care and healthy lifestyle, um, options. So, in the HR weekly newsletter, you see us talk a lot about the Omata Health Plan, our employee assistance program, free opportunities for our employees to utilize and take advantage of pre-, of, um, preventative care and healthy lifestyle op-, um, options that the data shows significantly reduces our claims cost bec- um, when people are actively participating in those programs. We also have One Digital, who's our insurance consultant, um, who helps us significantly when navigating the relationships with our vendors and the bidding process overall. As mentioned, the change in the vendor this year with Preferred One getting bought out, we've relied heavily on our, our consultant to help us through the HITA process when we're selecting the vendor and now dealing with that implementation, um, and the, the concerns that have been, um, very prominent throughout that transition and still navigating those to date. Actually, just had a meeting today with them about it. Um, and then also, One Digital helps monitor our claims costs, which we go over with our insurance committee. So, we really can identify when we're seeing, um, big spikes, where they're coming from, um, what we can anticipate. We monitor our high claimant costs to see where we may or may not anticipate a potential increase in stop-loss in the future. We also talk about, based off of their Spring Bucks data and analytical data, we can see where we may have a population that's falling behind on preventative care, um, such as, um, I, I can't think of one of them, but, you know, a cancer screening or, uh, dental appointments or something like that. So, then we can use that information, put it out in the HR newsletter to re- to just help remind folks that the preventative care significantly helps them and that preventative care is covered under our plan. So, all this data helps us not only monitor it to determine what our potential increases in premiums will be, but also to help educate our employees, um, to, uh, to hopefully make decisions that can help overall with their, their health. And then lastly, as part of our networks that we belong to, we're constantly monitoring these new trends that are coming out, especially the mega pharmaceutical, or specialty pharmaceutical trends that we're concerned about. So, really working through our networks to advocate for legislative solutions around that. Um, strongly feel that there's no one district that's gonna be able to have the answer to this, and we really need to lean on our legislative solutions to address the significant risk that is, that's, that's out there for school districts. And then also leaning in on the state and federal programs that are available to offer that safety net should something happen to a district of our size. These have sometimes happened to, to larger districts that can take that hit a little bit better than we can because they just have such a significant number of individuals on their plan, whereas we have a, we don't have that big of a plan that we can really take a hit of three million just coming from one claim. Um, so working through all of that. And with that as well, um, I believe that Chair Franz, you had the question about the PBM, um, uh, formulary. Um, so we do, um, get constant updates from the insurance provider that utilizes a committee of, um, pharmacists, doctors, nurses, uh, industry professionals, and they're constantly reviewing what any changes to the FDA, any new, um, generic brands that have come out versus the name brands that have the exact same formulary. Then, um, they, they then cover that and then they remove the brand name from our list of included. Again, those are all to just make sure that our formulary list is compliant with FDA, they're safe, and also help to reduce the, the claims and the amount that we're spending on pharmaceuticals. So, that's, that's just my update for today. Is there any questions about self-funded plans that I can help answer?
I guess, just overall, trying to track everything because I'm not an expertise, expert in this area, but you and I have had some, I've sent a lot, I've sent emails over the past year trying to understand it better because I believe it to be a risk for our district, especially with the specialty, what is it, mega specialty, um, prescriptions. Um, do you, and I probably shouldn't have asked this ahead of time, Director Herman, but do you, do you see solutions to this? I mean, or is this, is there gonna be a third party that, is it gonna, like, where do you see the path going to help mitigate this risk for school districts? Because I'm sure corporations are dealing with some of the same, um, risks, but have deeper pockets to deal with it, of course. So, I'm kind of asking for your perspective on, on how do we best navigate this? And maybe, I know this is the first step about creating awareness. I understand that, but.
Um, so, I, I think, like many complex solutions, it's gonna take many complex, um, answers. And I think one of them is networking with legislation to help pass legislation, um, to help protect, um, school districts and other smaller tax-funded organizations from mitigating this risk. Um, I think there's a lot that can be done legislatively through the FDA process on what this could look like potentially as well. Um, and really digging into the, the funding that is there with the safety nets and, and expanding that availability to have that access. Also, it's not the mega specialty right now, but we do have already, uh, a third party that we have attached to our plan called Paid Health that helps with our specialty pharmaceuticals that have significant costs to them. And they go out and they help find nonprofits that help fund for those prescriptions, they help find couponing for those prescriptions. And I don't have the number off the top of my head, but they're saving our plan hundreds of thousands of dollars, and it's like maybe seventeen scripts that we're talking about.
Mm-huh.
Um, so we do, we do have, and we're legislators, um, we're leveraging those existing resources. I think we just need more, and we need legislative action to help protect the, protect this, this risk that's coming about. Because I, I do believe you're accurate that it's not just school districts that have this risk, it's, it's really everybody and the entire industry that has at risk out there and, um, something that we're, we're monitoring closely.
So, I, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, so as we just approved our legislative, um, platform, is this something that should be included? I guess I wasn't, um, privy to this information, as you were Chair Crosby, that this, you know, should this be included in our legislative platform?
Um, Director Atkinson, thank you. Um, we did briefly discuss it the, the end of the last work session as an agenda item I wanted to bring forward today. Um, and, you know, I, I leave it up to the will of the board. I know it's a legislative platform from my networks I belong to, from the self-funded networks. Um, because some districts are fully funded, some districts are self-funded, I don't know where all districts land on this, but the networks I belong to, it is part of our platform.
Okay, that's good to know. Thank you.
I've kind of wondered that too, Director Atkinson. Um, the other avenue I've, I've thought about that, and maybe it is happening, is, is, um, as, as, um, the bulk of our staff, which are teachers, get more involved in understanding this, and not to say they aren't, but get more involved as the cost increases and it affects their paycheck more, it makes me wonder if, um, large unions will, you know, do some of that work as well, lobbying with, with. do some of that work as well, lobbying with with the government and lobbying for change.
There's a lot of lobbying going on on this, particularly with the implosion of PBMs and healthcare providers. Because as they take the, the, you know, basically it's an antitrust lobby right now, particularly with what's going on with some of the largest healthcareers eating up the smaller ones and therefore controlling those markets, both at the PBM space and then also the large health service providers that that don't want people who are self-funded because they wanted they themselves balance that risk pool. And the problem with small businesses in a nonprofit healthcare state, as well as at the federal level, you've got an issue with the legality of binding together smaller self-funded into a more palatable risk pool. But that whole issue with pharmaceuticals, that was top of mind in the last legislative session and will continue to be top of mind for not only school districts, small businesses, county governments, you name it. It's a, it's a huge issue and it's 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 fed by the, it's it's fed by the increasing healthcare costs. And again, that we have a small district and as the tenured employees grow, our risk pool increases, I would imagine, quite a bit in that area, too. Our risk anyways on the healthcare costs and the the need to go a little bit above and beyond in our payments.
Chair Franz, if I, I'm understanding the question. I don't have the data on me right now with where our our major risks lie in terms of our our population. Because I know that that the, no matter where they're at in their life journey, there's there's healthcare associations attached to that, whether they're starting or have a family or single and don't, you know, that that all varies. And I I don't recall off the top of my head, I don't know if you do, Director Fredrickson, where our risk pool analysis is showing our population to be. But that's definitely information I can get to the board.
Well, I know it's going to be, it's a problem for, basically for every small to medium-sized business as well as organizations that are tax-funded such as this. So I would encourage everyone to lobby the legislature at the federal as well as the state level, particularly in a in a legislative year. Also, to start to normalize the healthcare costs so that the larger providers who are controlling the markets now are not actually influencing against the smaller organizations. But I did want to, I did have one question. Coupons, are you talking like coupons in the PBM sense, such as like a GoodRx or something like that, that that we're participating in? Or what are those, how are we getting those coupons?
Thank you, Chair Franz, for the question. Individuals can get, go to GoodRx and and get a coupon. And and we have tried to promote that to our employees to encourage them to do this. The Paid Health I was referring to earlier is a a more complex, robust couponing system that they're looking at, that they're attaching to, something that wouldn't, an employee themselves wouldn't have access to. So they go through this entire process. Once a script comes through that is eligible for Paid Health support, they go through a a process with them. And then a Paid Health consultant works with them and goes out and researches all of these options, whether that's nonprofit support for grants, if it's couponing through their connections and and their deals that they've made with different vendors or different pharmaceuticals. They do this whole very robust process with that individual to look for the best funding opportunity for that 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 prescription.
Okay, great. And one last question. Do we use, you mentioned one, you know, the Paid Health piece, but do we use TPAs at all in general for any part of the plan, third-party administrators?
We use ProAct as a carve-out PBM for our pharmaceutical. We use Paid Health. We use Omata Healthcare for the Healthy Lifestyle App. Director Fredrickson, am I missing any off the top of your head? We have a TPA with Spring Bucks, who does the analytical data on our claims data. And this is all through our our overall contract with UMR and and One Digital. It's all wrapped into that overall HITA process we did with them. Those are the only ones that's coming off the top of my head. I'll look back and send the board a complete list.
That's okay. I didn't prepare you for that question. So I appreciate you knowing all that off the top of your head anyways. It's very impressive. Are there any other questions or concerns from the board?
Thank you. It's a lot.
Appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Moving on to the update to the calendar, as Director Edwards had alluded to earlier. This will be, we will be requesting board approval for the change in the calendar. And so I hand it off to Dr. Edwards.
Thank you, Director Franz, members of the board. As you recall, we did bring forward a calendar to you in November. And there was some discussion, there were a few edits that needed to be made. We call back in November, we brought it forward a month earlier than we typically do so that we could establish, most importantly, the beginning and end of the school year and that our calendars in HR and Business Office could be built accordingly. We have now brought our Calendar Committee of Staff together and reviewed, and we're bringing back just a few edits to that calendar based upon that feedback that we had an opportunity to build.
Oh, thank you. Sorry about that. So we are bringing back a calendar that has been edited just slightly. We found, after looking more fully at it, that there was an additional student day that was not needed on the calendar. So specifically, the student day that has gone away now was not a particularly popular student day among staff and probably among families, specifically December 23rd. So that no longer is a student day that was in the original calendar, but we did not need. We had one extra day on the calendar as it worked. We did also address the concern that was discussed at the table, that this is what I was alluding to in my previous presentation, a couple of presentations ago, the absence of Laker time. We have put Laker time now into each of the Wednesdays, including the early release days. We desire to have Laker time. This is an instructional minutes evaluation that we once again need to do. If we could start off the year with having it in place, we will certainly do so to acknowledge the ask from the high school students that we maintain Laker time as it's become a feature of the calendar that has, they've become reliant upon. Teachers report that as well, that it is valuable. So we're going to maintain, we've identified in each Wednesday, Laker time. We will maintain that to the extent we are able. It becomes, as I've shared a couple of different times here, as the school year progresses, if we have any snow days, if we have a winter like we did last winter where we had to use up almost all of our e-learning days, we have to be monitoring that very closely. So we will continue to do that from an instructional minutes perspective, particularly for juniors and seniors. Because traditionally, our seniors have gotten out before everybody else as well. Once again, that's a decision that gets made as we see how the year plays out and that we have enough enough instructional minutes to allow for that. And so those are the substantive changes, as well as conferences got moved around just a little bit. The previous calendar, for example, had middle school conferences occurring on October 31st. That was not a particularly popular evening to have conferences on. So we have found accommodation for that and adjusted. So you'll find that the calendar you have before you is appear to, appears from the committee's perspective to be accurate and aligned with what we would like to have forward.
Right, so I'm going to take a motion.
Tho' made.
By Director Crosby and.
Second.
A second by Director Atkinson. And I'm going to open it up to discussion.
If I may, I, on behalf of like all the students, I talked to all the staff, really appreciate you keeping the Laker days. That's just really awesome that you took the feedback and made that work. So I really appreciate that. Thank you.
As well as, I think, December 23rd, I think that's going to be appreciated as well.
And Halloween.
Yep, it was, it was good that we came together, we were able to find adjustments. And to your point, we're, we're actually, it was great to hear the feedback that you brought forward at the November meeting on behalf of students, that this is a day, a portion of the regular school calendar that is important to them. So appreciate you bringing that and advocating that position.
Thank you.
I have a quick question, and it's for our student. Laker time got started, I believe, in the 2016-2017 school year.
Sounds about right.
By the Student Council. And they chose Wednesday. Have there been any other discussions in the Student Council that that day is still working for them? I mean, have.
There hasn't really been any discussion in my time, like, that decision would have been made before anybody currently in high school. I've heard no complaints about Laker time being on Wednesday. Personally, I never really thought about being on another day, but as I reflect, I kind of like it being in the middle of the week. It provides flexibility because if you're missing something at the beginning of the week, then two days later, you have a chance to make it up likewise. If you're going to be missing Friday or Thursday, two days before you have that day. So I I think it's been really working Wednesday, and I think my peers agree with that.
Great. And then I had one question for Dr. Edwards, if that's okay.
Yep.
When we did a calendar, I think it was last year, one of the things about the parent conferences and the timing of it was that some of the Fastbridge data wasn't going to be available on time. Has that now been rectified with this calendar?
Yes, it has. Yep. I'm looking over to Mr. Glenn here, who's the elementary principal rep on that committee along with representatives from the elementary teaching staff. When we met last week to review this, that was one of the criteria that we had in place to adjust and make sure that the calendar or the conference dates align with that.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
That passes seven zero. Okay, so the next thing we have is a proclamation on school safety, security, and staff appreciation week. And I'm going to turn that over to Dr. Thomas to read our proclamation.
Thank you, Chair Franz, Board Directors. I'll just read, zoomed in, right? There we go. Prior Lake Savage Area Schools recognizes January 8th through the 12th, 2024, as School Safety and Security Staff Appreciation Week. Our school safety and security staff ensure the safety of our more than 8,700 Prior Lake Savage Area students and more than 1,300 employees. This week, we celebrate our thanks and gratitude for these essential staff. Whereas National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day was celebrated on January 9th, 2024, whereas school safety and security staff at Prior Lake Savage Area Schools includes two school resource officers from Savage and Prior Lake Police Departments, campus and lunchroom supervisors, a district emergency preparedness and response coordinator, and school building crisis response teams. Whereas school safety and security staff help keep Prior Lake Savage Area Schools, buildings, students, staff, and community safe. Whereas school safety and security staff aid students in developing positive behavioral skills, mentoring and counseling students, and acting as mediators when disagreements arise. Whereas school safety and security staff train staff and teachers to identify and handle emerging safety issues. Therefore, let it be resolved, the Board of Education hereby extends its appreciation to school, safety, and security staff for ensuring a safe and welcoming environment for our students, staff, and community, and declares January 8th through the 12th, 2024, to be School Safety and Security Staff Appreciation Week in Prior Lake Savage Area Schools. And I'll just say, we can't thank our staff that we've mentioned here enough for the outstanding work that they do to be proactive and supportive in our school environments. I would also give mention to their collaboration with the district crisis response team as well so that we know how we can best support our schools at any point in time, whether it's an emergency need or like, as we stated here in the resolution, those preventative drill maintenance routines as well. So thank you to all of our folks in our schools who keep our campuses safe.
Okay, moving on to policy, we have quite a few policies. We did, these did go through the Policy Committee and were reviewed in the last study session by the board. We can go over these individually, we can go over them all at once. I take feedback from the board on how you want to do this. But first, let me get a motion.
Tho' made.
By Director Bullion.
Second.
Second by Director Crosby. Okay.
The hand action really helps.
And so again, I'm going to take feedback from the board on how to proceed. Do we want to go over these individually or all at once?
My opinion is that if anyone has anything to say about one of them, but I think I'm fine with taking them as a group.
I'm fine with taking them as a slate.
Okay. All right then, I'm getting the head nods across the board here. I just want to make one.
I don't think it really matters because I'm in the minority on this, so. But thank you for asking, Chair Crosby. Appreciate that.
Director Herman, I do want to point out that we did make that one change from the study session to include parents and legal guardians. So that that change was made throughout all of these where it applied.
Chair Crosby, or sorry, Chair Franz, members of the board. Yes, we did go, I did go through and change everything to include legal guardian. And also on 605 dot two, there was a grammical error that was district website will be, will posted, that I made that edit to say district website will post. Those were the two edits, to my understanding, from the work session.
Okay. Any other questions or comments before?
I do have actually one question. It has to do with 605.
Okay.
605.1, 605.2, I think it's all 605 series. So in our policy, hold on, I have to pull it up. So for instance, in 605, on the very last statement, number eight, and this statement is repeated across the board. I think I know the answer, but I'm also very confused by the way it's written. Right now, Title IX does not include gender identities, so I'm trying to understand why it's included in this list and consistently throughout all the policies, if it's not included in Title IX.
Director Atkinson, member of the boards, we made sure that everything that was included in the protected classes listed also were encompassing of all Minnesota statutes.
That's what I thought. That it's Minnesota law versus.
I'm sorry?
It's Minnesota law driven versus Title IX. Is that correct?
It's all encompassing of federal and state law, protected classes.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Any other comments or questions on policies?
I had one question on 605 point one. Should that be E through 12 students?
Can you, can you clarify which, where you're reading it?
Yes, that would be helpful. Sorry, purpose. Number one, school board is committed to providing K through 12 students. Shouldn't that be E through 12?
Good catch. I say that.
And the reason I say that too is because, like, we just looked at the calendar and we say E through 12.
Yes.
On the calendar, so I just, for consistency, that's all.
Director Herman, I don't know if this, I'm going to ask your opinion on K or E and what this policy can cover. I don't know if E is community ed still, if that's part, I don't, I don't know that.
A good question. Okay.
I'm just curious, do we have early childhood participating in co-curricular activities?
That was my question.
Yeah, no, that's there.
Because E is the community ed run.
Normally, yeah, we would consider E through 12, and that makes sense. This might be an exception.
Okay.
The calendar would, because that's, community ed is part of our district, but.
Because we, we are E through 12, but yeah, but it would make sense that we don't offer co-cur-
Good call.
Yeah.
Yeah. Unless they come back and say, wait a minute.
So, do you wanna weigh in on that, Director Herman?
Pre-K pickleball.
Chair Franz and members of the board, I apologize, I was not following, I couldn't hear. So, I, I, I believe we should leave it at K-12.
Okay.
I do believe that is the students that participate in co-curricular. Our community, which would include early, early childhood, participates in community education events. But in terms of the definition of co-curricular, I, I do believe that would be specific to K-12. And I apologize if that didn't answer the question.
No, that did, I believe, is that good?
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions on any of the policies? Okay, I know there's a lot of them here. Hearing none, are we good with a vote? So, all in favor of policies 403, 404 point one, 408, 410, 420, 506 point three, 514 point one, 516, 516 point five, 518, 530, 530, sorry, 605, 605 point one, 605 point two, 605 point three, and 605 point four, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? That passes seven zero. And we are on to administrative reports.
So, we do have, oops, am I plugged in yet? So, we do have, uh, I do have one superintendent report, and then we do have a couple of admin reports. So, just real quickly, I want to remind everyone of MLK Junior Day Breakfast this year. We're partnering with the Prior Lake Rotary Club for that day and that breakfast. That'll be January 15th, starting at 7:30 a.m. at Prior Lake High School. And this will also be where we recognize staff, as well as noting that we have our continued partnership with our city, townships, and community organizations sponsoring this event, and it's all open to the public to attend that first portion of the breakfast. And then we'll have staff recognition and PD later on that day. And I will turn it to Dr. Edwards.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas. Members of the board, wanted to provide a brief update tonight regarding transitioning of our middle school math curriculum. Has been a topic of discussion of late within the community, and wanted to provide you with a couple of updates related to that. As you recall, at our December board meeting, we brought forward new course proposals at the high school, as well as a new math sequence that had been brought through the curriculum committee. And that math sequence impacted, there were two documents in that. One was the upcoming school year, the 24-25 school year, the second document was related to the 25-26 school year and beyond. And anytime a change like that is made, it's certainly important that it's fully understood, and it's, can be confusing. And particularly during the all-important time of transitioning. So, I wanted to make a couple of points very clear tonight for your sake and for the listening public's sake as well. And then give you a little update, because we held a parent information night at the middle school this evening while this board meeting was going on, and I have an update on that from our middle school principals. So, first of all, I wanna emphasize that students who are currently engaged in advanced math coursework will continue to have those opportunities to do so throughout their remaining years at Prior Lake Savage Area Schools. That was of the utmost importance to us in this process, which was the reason for the multi-yeared approach that we brought forward. So, for example, those current sixth graders who are in advanced, have been identified in advanced coursework and are experiencing that in sixth grade, will continue to experience that in seventh grade and into eighth grade. However, for incoming sixth graders, they will begin to have, what we're terming pathway choices, as you recall, as they enter eighth grade, that aligns with our current course offerings. Again, these changes have come about as a result of our K-12 math curriculum review. Specifically, we wanna ensure a deep understanding of the foundational algebra skills necessary to assess, to access rather high-level courses later on as they progress through their years in school. And I wanna call attention to an error when posed a question, when I, a question was posed to me in December of whether we had current sixth graders that are engaged in advanced, any current sixth graders engaged in what would be called double grade accelerated. We do have four students in that, and those students will continue that path as they move forward. So, I stand corrected, apologize that I did not have the proper information that night in response to that, but those students will continue to have the coursework that they have set out on, as will all students. Specifically, as we look at this, there was a parent information night tonight at the middle school level for incoming, which is our annual event, happened a couple of weeks earlier than normal, because we've moved up our registration process, et cetera, our staffing process. So, occurred tonight, and I did check in with our middle school principals, and they did report that it went very well at the middle school this evening. One piece that was shared with incoming sixth-grade parents was that, as a result of this change, when, when it was shared that this change results in us not making decisions for incoming students when they're fifth graders about a course path that they might be on, whereas we're waiting to identify that course path in eighth grade, when they have that deeper understanding and knowledge, and are prepared to make that course pathway decision more closely to when they will engage in that at the high school level. That seemed to be a sentiment that resonated well, according to our principals. There were, it was shared with me via text, a lot of head nods when that was, when that clarification was provided. So, I feel like we'll continue to be responsive to questions as they come forward in this time of transition. Another thing that I, I believe I've alluded to in previous addressing this matter, but we still have policy 513 in place. It will continue to remain in place as a way to address student, individual student situations and needs where there's acceleration that students and our parents are looking for. And I say students and their parents, because as a secondary administrator, I dealt with a number of times when, actually, it was the student that would drive this, advocate to their parents, and the parents would come and say, we'd like our child to be assessed for whether or not they're appropriate to move ahead of their grade-level peers, whether it be on a specific subject, or multiple subjects, or a full grade. Doesn't happen very often in a full grade at the secondary level, occasionally happens at the elementary level. But that is the policy that we would continue to look to, to provide us those opportunities for students who are needing advancement above their grade-level peers. So, wanted to share that additional report tonight, additional context. And again, we will continue to work with families to make sure that no student is lost in this process of transition, and that we are really sticking to the spirit of what this all came about of, which was that K-12 curriculum review process that said, we have students that we wanna, we wanna make sure all students are fully prepared and have a depth of understanding in the foundational skills, particularly with regard to algebra, if you recall me speaking of that on multiple occasions, so that they can really access that, those higher-level courses. For some, it's, those higher-level courses become, begin in their sophomore year of high school. Might be even taking courses that could make them eligible for college credit. Most notably, happen in their junior and senior year typically, so.
Thank you for that. I have a question. So, I think that, for me, the most confusing part is that there, I'm looking at the graph that we received on the December school board meeting, and when I went back and re-looked at it, and after the questions that I'd received from the community on this, who are very passionate about advanced and gifted and talented learning, which I've had a son as well. My question is, what happens when a fifth-grade student, who is identified through the Bridges curriculum, is identified as an advanced math student? What happens as they come into sixth grade? Because on this graph, there's nothing listed on here for sixth-grade advanced math. So, how will a student either coming out of Sage? That's one question. And/or a fifth-grade student just coming out of our regular schools? How will their, their needs be met as an advanced math student in our district?
Yep, so next year specifically, this fifth-grade group coming out of Sage, I wanna address that specific group of students currently is receiving sixth-grade math instruction, via pilot, actually, one of our pilot courses. They will be, they will be able to move into the seventh-grade advanced course next year. And then the following year, they will be a part of the eighth grade, and they will have geometry. We will offer geometry for multiple years, up to three years, we predict, still at the middle school level in this time of transition. And we will continue to look at students who might be elsewhere in our district or new to our district, who come in with skills that would mirror or match those of those students who have experienced that. We would apply policy 513, look through that, evaluate that process, and we may have students in addition that might be experiencing that as well.
So, if I'm understanding you correctly, you're basically saying that any student who's identified in the, our elementary schools through the Bridges curriculum as being an advanced math student, coming into sixth grade, they would advance to seventh-grade math, or-
Yeah, they would-
Seventh-grade advanced math, which was, is called Algebra I, but I think it's called-
It's actually pre-algebra.
Advanced math or something like that.
Yeah, pre-algebra, advanced pre-algebra in seventh grade. So, they would be, and just to clarify, they would be subject to policy 513, to, which is a subject-specific or grade, full-grade acceleration. And we'd look at whether they meet all necessary criteria to align with their skills to, to be eligible for that.
So, help me understand what type of criteria they're gonna have to meet, and is this gonna create a huge workload for our teachers and admin of evaluating all these students if we don't have this advanced math option? Just, cuz do we, I'm assuming currently we have a sixth-grade advanced math, is that correct?
We do currently, correct, yep.
That's what's changing.
Yep, that is correct. Yep, that is what's changing. All, all incoming students, unless they are in this group, would go into the sixth-grade math, yep.
So, could that potentially create a huge workload for our staff and our administration to identify all these students who are then grade skipping? I'm just trying to understand the rationale behind it.
I'm gonna defer to an elementary principal who happens to be in the audience, because it would be our incoming fifth-grade students. And ask him to share a little bit, if you may step up to the mic, to share just a little bit of perspective in terms of how your fifth-grade teachers are feeling that they are meeting the needs of all levels of learners, and how many, if any, would potentially need more rigor coming out of fifth grade. And I know I'm putting you on the spot, and I apologize.
Go right ahead, Dr. Edwards. I think the new curriculum is really raising the bar for us at the elementary level. I hope, and I, I mean that, that we're gonna be able to see some test scores that are gonna be positive. First year, we'll see where we're at moving forward, I, I feel very confidently about that, just in through all the observations that I see in the classrooms when I'm there. Now, when it comes to a lot of extra work, is there gonna be a lot of extra work on us if we do that, or people-
It would be for the middle school, I'm sorry, don't mean to interrupt you.
I think that from the, from the elementary perspective, it won't be.
No.
Like, we'll be able to identify if there's anything that we need to know. We'll very quickly be able to, to look at data and give the data that's needed to help make any suggestions or recommendations, but I think the middle level will be able to do the same thing pretty quickly.
Maybe a better question to ask is, what percentage of your students would you be considered advanced? That would be going up into the sixth grade, that would need to be evaluated to move up to seventh grade if we're not offering advanced math in sixth grade, does that make sense?
Maybe a small percentage?
Very small, I would say, based upon-
Each cohort is so different.
Yep.
When, when it comes out of, you might have a cohort that has a handful, you might have a cohort that has a classroom full. It really depends on how you put those together.
Dr. Edwards, over the course of the, I don't know, was it the past three or four, or I don't know what the timeframe was, was it about a, wasn't there a 50% reduction of students-
Yeah.
From our internal assessment that was eligible for that, that are currently enrolled compared to where we were?
Yep, and that was specific to double grade skip, so currently, and that was the, the question that I-
Okay.
Didn't respond to accurately in our-
Got it, got it.
Previous conversation. We had, we currently have four students who are receiving double grade accelerated. We have approximately 17 students who are single grade accelerated. So, we definitely have-
From all of our elementaries?
Yes.
From our seven elementaries, about 17 kids?
Yep.
So, it's about, okay.
Yep, so, I, I believe we'll be able to continue to accommodate, and once again, I do believe that the depth of the student experience that they will have coming out, we will be able to replicate, I'm optimistic. Part of the driving force, additional information and context around this, is that our pilot teachers in the seventh grade, who've been piloting one of the curriculum, the curriculum that we are looking at and piloting have been the, one of the driving forces behind this recommendation, because they have been approaching with the pilot curriculum in seventh grade, saying both their advanced students, as well as their regular students, have been able to find rigor in the pilot curriculum that we are utilizing, as well as our sixth-grade curriculum pilot that's going on, happens to be our Sage students engaged in that, are finding rigor as well.
So, so, this curriculum may offer a little more differentiation in the classroom experience?
More challenge, more depth of understanding, that, and the teaching and instructional practices aligned with that. Again, will require training to get our teachers up to speed and confident. I think what we've seen with Bridges specifically at the K-5 level, that confidence has grown, correct me if I'm wrong.
I would agree, and having the early release time to be able to engage in that learning at a level that we haven't been able to do has really helped our teachers as well.
How many students currently are in sixth-grade advanced math?
We, I don't have that number, I would be going off of past recollection, but I would say it is somewhere in the neighborhood of 100 students.
So, now you're saying-
Between the two middle schools that are currently in that, and they, they will continue that track.
Right, but that makes me believe that there will be 100 more coming in that would need to be grade-skipped, is what you're telling me.
Necessarily.
I, I don't, it is our belief, and this is why the recommendation coming from our teachers, is that leveling that and offering one level is most appropriate in math in sixth grade, going back to the foundational skills. We still have advanced course offerings in other areas, and that, too, was something that was received positively tonight from our parents of incoming students. There is still advanced offering in social studies, science, and English. But specifically in the math area, we believe that, that deeper understanding is going to serve our students better as they move into eighth grade and beyond. And that is the rationale for the recommendation. So, it is a shift in thinking, we recognize that fully, but we believe that our, that is gonna meet the needs of our students long-term at a higher level of performance.
Dan, thank you, and thank you for addressing that tonight as well. Is there, as much as I would like to think everyone watches all of our meetings in their entirety and reads the entire board packet, I'm realistic. Is there such a thing as maybe a very brief, quick correspondence that we can send our middle school families to reiterate this?
Yeah, I will definitely follow up with our middle school principals. Again, they had a positive turnout tonight, but we know that, having years of doing those nights, it doesn't reach everybody, so what their plan is to get that message out to all, because registration is coming up.
Or current seventh and eighth graders-
Yep.
Families, yeah, thank you so much.
Do you have a question?
Yes. Sorry if you've already answered this question, but it's clarification. So, sixth-grade math will now just be the one level, but in seventh grade, you'll still have the, like, a general and advanced?
For the, for this next year, yes, for the following year, those- For the following year, those sixth graders will continue in that one level for two years, sixth and seventh grade, and then in eighth grade, they will have course pathways that align with our current pathways.
And then regardless of if they're grade skip or not, those taking seventh-grade math will be able to choose if they want to take the advanced or gen in eighth grade?
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep. And, and the other piece that, and thank you for bringing this up because this also has been a shift that aligns with, as you're accustomed to and all high school students are accustomed to. We had criteria for getting into those classes at the middle school, whereas at the high school, there's no specific criteria that needs to be met. Students have the choice. We are moving in that direction here with the math move, where that, they get that standard experience in sixth and seventh grade, the choice comes into place in eighth grade. Now, obviously, our teachers are, will be prepared to share recommendations with parents through the conference process. Typically, it would be in the seventh-grade year. What would be a typical parent inquiry could be, what would you recommend for my child? And our teachers, to your question, Director Atkinson, will be prepared to respond and give recommendation if asked, but also students and families can make those choices on their own, which path they want to go toward, and it lays out kind of, if you go this path, here's what you're going to be looking at in ninth and tenth grade. If you go this way, as you recall from those documents, here's what you will set yourself up for as you round out your high school career.
And then just one more question. Forgive me, because this was a couple of years ago. Sixth and seventh-grade math kind of have a similarity, and I know you talk about in fifth grade, looking for potential students that can potentially move to seventh-grade math. Is there any way to have also continued monitoring through sixth grade to see if there's any potential students that could possibly finishing sixth-grade math test out of seventh grade?
Yep.
Just because from respect of a high school, or, you know, having that extra year to take like AP classes to help alleviate some college and just broaden the knowledge.
Yep, and that's where policy five thirteen comes into play. That allows for that opportunity for students to, and families to inquire. I think to your, to Director Atkinson's question, I think we'll learn in the first year and subsequent year, the, how this lands and how much demand or request we have, and if the demand for those implementation of policy five thirteen becomes overwhelming to the system, we'll have to reevaluate. But I believe our teachers are quite confident that the experience that the students are going to have is not going to have the demand for that, that we could be wrong in that assumption, but.
Thank you very, very much for that enhanced explanation that I know is probably somewhat covered in the curriculum committee, but the added explanation for parents and for the public is greatly, greatly appreciated.
Chair France, it wasn't, so that's why I think there was so much confusion. So I appreciate the, I mean, really, the, the reality of it is we are taking away the sixth-grade advanced math option and, and the seventh-grade advanced mash up option, correct?
That is correct. Yep.
Yeah, and so I guess my concern is anyway, anytime we take away something, with all of the challenges with, you know, with our math scores, I guess I have a hard time, I have a hard time having a special talented and twice-exceptional student. And then my other son took advanced math. I have a hard time understanding and believing that this is going to be work. So it, it is concerning to me, and I can understand why there has been a rise from our community when we're taking away the advanced math option.
Can I make a suggestion? And I'm just going to, because we're ending up having a discussion like it's an agenda item and this is not on the agenda.
That's fair.
Maybe it would be better if we discuss this as a board as a study session and see if we wanted an extra session on this.
Sure.
Otherwise, we are going to be kind of adding something here that was not really approved on the agenda.
I think that's a great suggestion.
Moving forward, are there any other administrative reports? Let's start with, I'm sorry. No, go ahead. Sorry. No, 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 you're fine. I was just wondering, I didn't see the nod. So there's nothing here, so moving on with the, it's fine. I'm new, I could have forgotten, so it's okay.
The student council report?
Please.
Sorry about that.
It's okay.
I know it was last year, but last week of school, December, we had a pancake breakfast and cocoa, just kind of to help spread some sunshine. That was by our sunshine committee, just, you know, putting some smiles on some faces. Looking forward, this Wednesday, we have our staff hall finalization. There was a hiccup that was hit, but we got resolved by our development committee, so they're going to be finalizing that Wednesday after school. And then, like Dr. Thomas talked about, the MLK Day, student council will be going to participate. In addition, our community service event will be working on one of the service projects, making quiet critters, which I hear they help elementary teachers encourage quietness. So additionally, our communications committee is working on their Laker lens, which is just a way to encourage student representation in sporting events that maybe don't always have the largest student body. So we're working to do that, just kind of show more Laker, Laker spirit and school support. And big thing coming up in February is our Sweethearts Spirit Week. We actually have a meeting this Friday with the activities director to finalize some details and dates for that. The big thing we want to be looking at this year is finalizing more traditions that can be specific to Sweethearts instead of just repeating homecoming, and I can talk more about that after we get the more stuff finalized, so at the next session.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
I have a question. Have you guys, I'm sure you're starting to plan prom or already probably full-force planning prom. Do you have any updates on prom?
So funny thing, student council actually does not do prom.
Oh, they don't? Oh, interesting.
It's prom committee, that's their own thing. I am also interested to hear how prom is going. So if you hear anything, please.
Oh, I wish I knew anything. I don't know anything, so if you hear anything, let me know. We'll keep each other informed. I know, yeah. Okay. So board reports. We'll start with Director Olsted, if you have any, and go around the table.
We had a productive teaching and learning committee meeting earlier today, right before this meeting, talking, reviewing, and having a really robust conversation around policy six oh six. Gosh, do I have that right?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, oh my gosh. Momentary lapse. It was a really good discussion, and I think with the conversations we've had earlier tonight about, you know, the makeup of different committees and things like that, I think tonight was a really good example of listening to each other's difference of opinion and different ways of thinking and different perspectives. So I thought it was very robust, and I thought it was good. And on the other side, I'm really looking forward to the MSBA conference later this week. So really looking forward to a lot of the sessions there as well.
Director Crosby?
No updates.
Director Burnick?
Director Boyan?
No updates.
Okay, Director Valesquez?
Okay.
And Director Atkinson?
Yeah, and I was also in the teaching and learning committee as well. I agree, we had a nice, robust discussion. It's so refreshing to hear different perspectives, so I think that was great. I will have to say, I had to scoot out, I was very concerned about missing this, so I'm not real clear what next steps is on. I know we had some good recommendations around language, around definitions, around state law, so I think, Dr. Thomas, maybe, were you there at the end? You can give us, sorry, I.
I was on your heels as we were both.
Oh, okay.
But I will say that we will continue the conversation through getting feedback to Dr. Edwards or myself from folks that will help shape out some of the, like, for example, the committee was wanting to define some words. We, we found ourselves a bit in the weeds of actually being human dictionaries, and I think we were kind of pushed back up a little bit to say, well, we don't have to do that, but, you know, the work group can look at how they can get, I mean, I think we have a group of words that I think the committee would appreciate being in there because it overlaps with other policies, five twenty-four and some others, if I have that number right, but other, other policies that have similar language. And I would concur with both directors that there was a good push-pull conversation from everyone in our community around what we know is a very sensitive conversation topic of curriculum materials and library media materials, et cetera. So I just want to thank the community for leaning into their truths and being respectful, and that's, that's what it's going to take to really move policy and practices in our district.
Thanks for that.
Okay, as far as community ed goes, from the committee that I sat on, I just want to remind people a couple of announcements from that committee, and that's that preschool registration and kids company for current families does open on January twenty-second, and for all other families, that meaning non-current families, opens on February first. Community ed still has several classes open this winter and spring session for enrollment, and one includes the Dance With Me Ball on Saturday, February twenty-fourth. And I know Director Valesquez has, has participated in that, so it's a really fun event, so if you haven't signed up for it, please do so. And also, that community ed is now hiring for summer staff, for kids company, swimming instructors, lifeguards. We're very happy that the pool will be open this summer, as well as teachers, and most of those positions are posted online. And again, as was stated, our MSBA conference, the Minnesota School Board Association, is this Friday and this Thursday and Friday, almost said Saturday, that would have been sacrilegious, January eleventh and twelfth, in which all board members are invited and already pre-registered to attend, so I hope to see everyone there. And with that, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn.
Sumin?
And, and we will be going to close session after a brief recess. Okay? Thank you.